30:00 AM, as we do all meetings, we will start with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the U.S. flag and the Texas flag. I'd like to ask the Commissioners' Court to lead us in those two at the appropriate time.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Public comment?
No public comment?
No public comment? There's a couple of items that...
One public comment.
Oh, go ahead.
Just gotta wish everyone a happy Easter this weekend, that our employees enjoy their time off, take advantage of a couple of days of rest and relaxation, and spend time with their families, and reflect on what the Easter season is all about. Enjoy.
Thank you, Commissioner. There's a couple of items that we need to either discuss after action items or executive session. W., you pointed out Triple S.
Yes, I need Triple S to be...
Microphone?
I need Triple S to be done after action item D. Please.
Okay. Anything else under consent that we need to take out or discuss separately, or wait?
Judge?
Yes.
If you can table double N and triple R.
Okay.
And then on double W, the date change on that needs to reflect 5/21/2013.
All right.
And triple O, the date as well, needs to reflect 4/13 instead of 4/12.
Okay. Anything else?
Double O?
Triple O.
You know, I noticed that there were two items on a travel. Let's see. TTT and UUU. Okay? And I just have a question. Are those two different courses? Is there anybody here from the Sheriff's Department? I'm sorry?
There's two parts to that course.
Because it just shows it as the same identical course on each one of those items.
All right. And they're both mandatory?
Okay.
They're both mandatory?
They're not mandatory, but it's like an honor to attend with the court.
Okay.
As a drug prevention expert, who will give the assessment, who will come down here, who will announce our options.
Okay. Yeah, it didn't identify part one, part two. It just said the exact same thing, and I says, "Well, where are we going to it?" Okay. No problem.
Anything else?
Pull double Q.
Judge, could we table double E?
Double what?
E.
Anything else? Do I hear motion to approve consent with the exception and/or the changes has previously outlined?
So moved.
Approved by Commissioner Gatz, signed by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor, signed by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Before we address the items to be pulled, let me go to claims, approval of claims. The reason for that is because we have to address payroll fairly quickly.
Yes. Judge Commissioners, I have claims warrants number 297699 through 298279, numbers 298335 through 298569. I have payroll for $1,650,754.83. I have a void for $108 check number 296052. That employee is not traveling. I also have health-related claims for $501,099.94 for your approval.
Do you recommend?
Yes.
Move to approve?
Second.
Move by Commissioner Benavides, signed by Commissioner Gatz, to approve claims as presented. Please note my abstention of the affidavits I provided. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Let me go ahead and take approval of minutes. We've been asked that those items be tabled.
Yes.
Okay. Move by Commissioner Gatz, second by Commissioner Gatz, to table the minutes. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries? Yes.
Could we... We have a lot of representatives from some of the small cities.
Which item is that, Commissioner?
M. M, in the action agenda.
Okay, we go to item M. Consideration and possible approval of a resolution supportive House Bill 3548, 3549, 3550, 3551, 3552 relating to annexation, disannexation, limitation on annexation, and extraterritorial jurisdiction by certain municipalities.
This agenda item on the packet that's included also includes the companion Senate bill. Okay? So in the resolution, it includes both numbers, the House bill and the Senate bill, for the record.
Anybody want to address that? Do I hear motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides and by Commissioner Gatz. Any further discussion? Yes.
Yes. Mr. Vella?
That's why I asked if somebody wanted to speak. Rolando, it's already passed, so...
Judge Commissioners?
Good morning. Mr. Vella, how are you?
Thank you.
Mayor, how are you?
Yeah, good morning. I'm Rolando Vella. I serve as City Manager for Towne and Laguna Vista. We have several city representatives here from the small cities. This is something that we've been working on for the past few weeks. We feel that the future of the county is dependent on the ability of all the cities to be able to grow and to be able to decide their future. And this is something that we've been working on, that we feel very strongly that we shouldn't be landlocked, that we should decide through our own respective cities what our annexation plan should be and where we want to be. So this is something that's very troubling for us, and that's why we approached our legislators to see what we could do. And I have, of course, I have Mayor Hernandez here.
No, no, no. I'll echo whatever you're saying. Judge and Commissioners, there are seven cities that are out there protesting what was done by Brownsville, and we're only asking, you know, what belongs to our cities, and that's all we're asking for.
Well, thank you. It's been passed, so, well, just about, anyway, so we're good.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're gonna do that right now, so... Anybody else like to make a comment? All right. Thanks. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Let me go to item 3P. It's kind of related. Consideration and approval of a resolution expressing concern and objection to the City of Brownsville strip annexations, supporting the small cities in Cameron County that have objected to these strip annexations, and calling on State Rep. Renee Livaeta and State Senator Eddie Lucio Jr. to take necessary legislative action to address this problem. Do I hear motion?
So moved.
By Commissioner Hernandez, signed by Commissioner Gatz. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries? Thank you. On item double Q, under the consent that was pulled out. Thank y'all. Consideration of... Commissioner, do you have an item on the agenda? Yes. No?
We just took care of...
Oh, they are? I thought you were gonna introduce the guys. Okay. All right. Not a problem. Thank you. Item double Q, consideration approval of a resolution authorizing the Cameron County Sheriff's Office to file a local border security program application through Texas Border Sheriff's Coalition and to accept the award. Cash match of $14,266.24 is required. Amount of award is $149,649.53. Pete, you pull that one.
I requested that be pulled because it requires a cash match, and as of right now, we do not have a funding source for the cash match.
Why wouldn't that come, yeah, from their forfeiture funds?
Well, if that's their intent, then we need to have it on the record.
Okay. I believe that that's gonna be the intent.
We had spoken to Martha previously and asked her if we can... Like I said, we had spoken to Martha previously and asked her if we can take the $14,000 from our overtime budget, that we have monies in there to cover it. And this is to match what's being asked for, to receive almost $150,000 in...
But why wouldn't you take it from your drug forfeiture funds? Can you take it from those funds? Now, why wouldn't you want to do that versus going to general fund monies?
If we can take it from drug forfeiture funds, I don't know how...
I don't see why you wouldn't be able to.
It's a match that's required for a grant for law enforcement, so my presumption on that is that they can use drug forfeiture. I don't know if that's... Of course, drug forfeiture usage is at the discretion of the Sheriff's Departments. I don't know if...
Well, so is the utilization of overtime.
I move to approve it subject to Fund 90 being used to subsidize the funding.
And I had had a conversation with Chief Reyna last week, and his intent at that point, he did indicate that he wanted to use the overtime money that they have in general fund in the Sheriff's Department. The court approved a budget of $35,000 for that, and right now, I checked last night, and they have $19,000 that is still available that has not been used. So that would, in essence, leave them only $5,000 to use for overtime for the following six months.
Yeah, and then we're gonna be looking right there.
Yeah, we're only halfway through the year, so if you guys can use it out of that fund, you've got the court's support.
It's not wanting to use it. We run a... We got 13 officers that we're paying for out of Fund 90. We got vehicles that we maintain.
How much do you have? What's your balance, what's your fund balance in Fund 90 today?
Today?
Right now?
I'm not too sure, but...
Anybody, does anybody know?
Probably about $6 million or so.
$6 million?
Yes.
I think you can handle $14,000.
Yeah, but our operating budget, just so you can know, our operating budget is almost about $1 million a year.
That's... Yeah, but a lot of that is general fund.
No, no. You're talking about what is supplemented by Fund 90.
Yes.
Well, that would be five-plus years' worth of operations, and I know that you're gonna be getting additional drug forfeiture funds in the future, so I would recommend that...
And this is how we get them. When we have more officers out in the field, there's more arrests, there's more stops, there's more... I mean, $14,000 from our... We're asking for $14,000 from our overtime budget?
Right.
To get $150,000 from...
It's not gonna happen. I mean, I would suggest that you go to forfeiture, and obviously, the reason is, if we take out of your overtime, you've got less than $5,000 left to finish out your overtime for the rest of the year. And what's gonna happen, you're gonna come back and say, "Hey, we're out of overtime money."
No, I guarantee you, we won't come back.
I've heard the guarantees before.
No, I'm telling you, Judge, we can manage that, that amount, and we can work with that amount.
Right.
And we'd like to take those monies to get $150,000 in return.
$14,000 out of $6 million is nothing. And $14,000 out of the remaining $19,000 is a lot. So we have a motion to approve it subject to drug forfeiture money, using it for that. So let's take it that way.
All right.
All right? Thank you. Appreciate it. Had a motion by Commissioner Gatz, a second by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries? Thank you, guys. I'm looking. I don't... I think that was it, under the consent. We're gonna discuss Triple S after action. Budget amendments, line item transfers, and their salary schedules.
The first budget amendment is for the Health Department, and then you have line item transfers for County Court at Law Number Three, JP 5-3, the DA's office, Sheriff's Department, juvenile boot camp, juvenile probation, juvenile detention, City of Brownsville election, environmental health. Then you have HIDA funding, budget amendment, line item transfers. You have bioterrorism, immunizations, heart engine outreach, Office of the Attorney General and the Crime Victims Funding, juvenile state aid. You have the WIC Department and the Parks Administration, DA Drug Forfeiture, DA Federal Forfeitures, Department of Treasury, Sheriff Forfeitures, Program Development and Management. You should have had another, two other line item transfers placed in front of you. The first one is for the Magistrate's Office to reflect the usage of lab salaries for salaries in the Magistrate's Office and for the extra help that was approved at the last meeting. There's another one for emergency management as well. You will also find a salary schedule for Department 104060 for the phone allowance for the Chief Emergency Officer. Salary schedule for the DA's Office CPS Program, and you have a salary schedule for the WIC Department. They had only received six months of funding. They have now received the full year, so the salary schedule reflects that as well now.
You recommend their approval?
Yes, I do.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Move by Commissioner Gatz, second by Commissioner Benavides. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries? Item D, consideration approval of a near-local agreement between Cameron County and Brownsville Independent School District?
Judge and Commissioners, last time we were here, we had several issues that we still needed to work out with BISD, and I believe all of those issues have been worked out. We've got one last item remaining. They did... We finally got the list of projects from the school district. Staff went out there yesterday or the day before, and the issue that we have now is of those five projects, you know, we might be able to do one for the amount that the buildings are priced out that we're gonna swap. When you take into account, you know, survey work that needs to be done, engineering, and then construction, so I'd like for this item to continue to be tabled and then work out. Instead of bringing five projects to the court and only be able to do one, I'd like to sit down with school district and have them prioritize, you know, the one project that they want to get done, and then bring back that project to the court. I believe all the other items have already been worked out with BISD. They're gonna take this to their Board of Trustees in the month of April during their April Board Meeting. So we should be able, if we have a special meeting next week or the regular meeting the following week, we should be able to go. At that time, our engineering and paperwork staff already went and saw all the five projects that BISD has on their list.
Okay, so you want to table item D and then table Triple S?
Correct.
Okay. Do I hear motion to table?
So moved.
By Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Gatz. All in favor, or discussion? Pete, just make sure, before we bring it back, that we've already cleared all those hurdles.
Yeah, we just got that last issue to go.
All right. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries? Item E, consideration and possible approval of a payment in the amount of $74,873.44 to Scott Rowland from FEMA.
Judge Commissioners, this is an item that we've been working on with Texas Division of Emergency Management. Mr. Rowland was owed his final 25% amount, which comes out to $74,873. I've been advised by TDM that FEMA has completed the final audit, and the monies have been released to the county. I don't believe we've gotten the monies yet.
Can we approve it subject to receiving the funds?
Yes.
Is there... I mean, do we charge any kind of fee for doing all that work? I mean, we've been working on this claim for years.
Right. No, we haven't charged anything that I'm aware of.
Is that inappropriate to do?
But who would you charge a fee to? FEMA?
No.
I mean, it's not his fault that... As I understand it, it's not Mr. Rowland's fault that this has taken so long. I mean, he did his paperwork, did what he had to do. It's been the glitch up at FEMA, so I don't know how we'd want to charge him for this. I don't see how we could.
Move to approve subject to us receiving funds.
And second, can you approve also the release of the check once we get it?
Yeah. Once...
Yeah, once we get the funds.
Move by Commissioner Gatz, second by Commissioner Hernandez. Discussion. One more thing is, how much are we still pending on our FEMA reimbursements? We haven't had a report in quite a while.
FEMA was... TDM was here two weeks ago. According to them, they are saying that we're pending about $960,000.
Okay. And we're still working? Who's getting involved in that? Everybody?
Yes.
You guys? Okay. All right. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries? Item F, consideration approval to pay RBM a balance of $27,091.24 without a PO for ballots printed for the November 2012 general election. Chris, how are you?
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. This is from the November 2, 2012 election. This is our ballot printer vendor. As the item states, these were orders that were done without PO due to both calculation errors from my office as well as a bit of a lack of communication. Their real cost, they're for ballots that we ordered and neglected to issue POs for, in some instances, miscalculation in the original PO. But they were mostly for the entities that we conducted elections for. We're starting to receive payments from those entities because they have been invoiced, and I request approval to pay this vendor.
Where you gotta pay it? Martha? They got... Okay. Do I hear motion?
Are there any changes in what the costs are to the entities as a result of this new amount that has to be paid out, Chris?
No, sir.
So they were already included?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do I hear motion?
So moved.
Second. By Commissioner Hernandez, signed by Commissioner Gatz. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, carries? Item G, consideration and authorization to pay invoice number 0203064 in the amount of $18,936.50 for the ACS to Odyssey image conversion.
Morning.
Eric, how are you?
This contract was started last year. We barely finished it about two months ago. Since the fiscal year finished, the PO was disencumbered, so we need to get that...
Reactivated?
Reactivated, yes.
Martha, you okay? Okay. Do I hear motion by Commissioner Gatz?
Thank you.
Signed by Commissioner Sanchez. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, carries? Item H, discussion and possible action concerning entry of a Commissioners' Court order, including findings of fact requiring JP Precinct 5 Place One and her staff to fully cooperate, the training for, the use of, and full implementation and integration of all precinct 5 Place One, migrated data, et cetera. Whose item is this? Legal?
Bruce, it says, sir.
Yes, sir. I was just looking for Mr. Gonzalez here. Yes, Judge, this is the discussion, part of this item. We have a proposed order and some legal issues to discuss with you in executive session to follow. But as, you know, the result of the last meeting, we have put together an order to require cooperation in implementing Odyssey in JP 5-1.
Okay, so you want to defer this till after?
Say that again.
Do you want to defer this till after executive session?
Yes.
All right. Item I, consideration and authorization to reclassify the job title Park Ranger from Slot Two from Budget Number 8306680 to Assistant Chief Park Ranger and increase the slot by $7,000.
Judge, on this item, I'd like to just kind of have a point of order. I think, you know, what we're doing here is we're creating a new position. And if we create a new position, we have to advertise for and also civil service test for a new position. The way this caption is worded, it's to increase a slot, but in essence, we're creating a new position. I'd like... If this is an increase to an individual, I'd like to see it brought to us in that form. Otherwise, I mean, it is my understanding with visiting with some of the folks that people are gonna have to apply for it and then get chosen from a group that apply? Is that not the way it is?
Yes, that's correct, Commissioner. It's a civil service position, so we couldn't just increase or increase somebody and give them the title. So we're creating a position with a new job description, and they would have to apply for it.
See, and that being the case, we don't need $7,000. We need $39,763. Okay?
So we'll be getting rid of one position and creating another one?
Correct.
But there's no vacancies right now.
There's no vacancies, so what we would have to do is, we're gonna, I guess, advertise within the department?
Well, you can't advertise within the department. You gotta advertise, period, because we can't selectively go to a group to advertise. We have to be, you know, equal opportunity employment compliant. And if we're gonna have a new position created, you can't open it just to a group of folks. You have to open it to whoever wishes to apply, is my understanding. Legal, I don't know. Is there...
I was gonna ask Arnold, what do you say about this, Arnold? I thought that we had rules in place where you could post within a department...
You can post this, since it's a position already existing within the department?
It doesn't exist.
Or it's a slot that's in within the department?
Yeah, but we're creating a new position. That new position requires a person to apply for and to test for. So in essence, it's a new position. So how can we not allow, other than those in that department, to apply legally?
Well, is it a new position or is it a reclassification? Because like, don't we do this all the time with the Sheriff's Office or the DA's Office?
Right, yes, exactly. We do it all the time with the Sheriff's Office.
Big departments that have different positions in there?
Right. The position exists in the department. We're not creating a new position or an additional slot. It's using an existing slot. We can advertise within the department for that. You don't have... He doesn't have an additional slot or budget to...
Let's look at the salary schedule. Is there a slot within that salary schedule that says Assistant Park Ranger Chief? Is there a slot that says that? Okay. So if it doesn't say that, how can you move somebody in there if there's no slot? So the salary schedule is what dictates. So if the salary schedule does not have a slot that is titled Assistant Park Ranger Chief, then there is no slot.
That's what you're asking to do, is reclassify the title?
No, and I agree with Commissioner Gatz, and this is not... You're asking to reclassify it, right? And then reclassify a slot... What this is implying is that the deal's been made. What this is implying is that there's a position there that's going to be reclassified. You just said there was no vacancies. There's already a person in that slot, correct? That you're going to reclassify and then give it a $7,000 increase, correct? You're gonna correct...
Reclassify the slot.
That's correct. Well...
And advertise within the department, anybody within...
Okay, now, what happens to the person that's in that existing slot right now if there's no slot?
If that person isn't selected to fill that position, they can take one of the other slots within the department that the person is selected to take.
But there are no vacancies right now.
Right. For example, if you take Officer One and he gets that position, whoever's in the current slot, whichever you're changing, would assume that other slot within the department.
But, okay, so...
I don't know. It just seems that there would be a more transparent way to be able to have a semblance of equal opportunity employer.
At least make it look like there's a fair opportunity, okay?
Let me ask you this. What is the difference between this and item Q on the concession agenda?
Item Q, we gave an individual a $7,000 or some kind of raise. I don't know how much it was.
Right. Last Commissioners' Court meeting, Human Resources took over some of those risk management responsibilities, and it's just to account for those additional responsibilities for that particular person.
Well, isn't this Assistant Chief just taking over additional responsibilities, and that's why we're giving him more money?
No, this is a new slot.
They're actually reclassifying this slot.[1682.34] Well, they're actually reclassifying this slot.
We're reclassifying.
Where we didn't reclassify this particular slot within HR Department.
But, but the, the position that's getting hired or whatever, the reason for doing that is to give them additional duties, right?
Right, and the issue with only advertising within the department is that since there isn't a, an additional slot out there, if for some reason someone else from another department or, or someone else came in and assumed that slot, then we'd have to release another one of the officers within the, the Park Ranger Department.
And I don't have a problem if you, if you, as long as it wouldn't be reclassified and there's additional duties, I have no questions on it. But if you're gonna reclassify a slot, that brings to me a light of the EOC or whatever all these rules are that we're supposed to abide by.
So give him additional responsibility and money, just don't change his title.
But that's not what's on the agenda though.
Right, but that, that would be what you're wanting to do, the same thing you did in Q today, except you didn't change that person's title, right?
Well, there's a little difference because you've got other, other Park Rangers that are getting paid the same amount of money. So that title slot is gonna remain the same, and if you look at, again, if you look at the salary schedule, you're gonna have all deputy Park Rangers with one Park Ranger, deputy Park Ranger making seven thousand dollars more. In this case, there was no comparables, you didn't have three or four, you know, individuals in your office making the same amount of money doing the same thing. So I, I think you have a problem with this agenda item, the way, the way it's written.
So are you saying that the Commissioner rather was just advertise it?
You know, but if you, you, you've only got a couple of choices. One is to create another slot at a cost of X and advertise that position and then hope that whomever is going to be selected is coming from within that department, which already gives, you know, it infers to me that somebody's already been selected to take over that spot. And that's not what the purpose of, of advertising is. That's, I mean, that's how I infer this, I mean, I don't know.
Let me ask you something, Javier. Before the Park Rangers were taken to the Constable's Office, uh, I take it you had a Chief Park Ranger?
Correct.
And then you also had a, somebody that was in charge under him?
That's correct, we had a, um, the last one we had was a Lieutenant.
Okay, and did the Lieutenant make the same amount of money as the rest of the Park Rangers?
No, ma'am, he, uh, I think he made thirty-nine, about thirty-nine thousand.
So what is so different from what's happening today?
We had the slot on the salary schedule, and this one, we're creating one.
I mean, to me, the person whoever's selected would get additional duties, they're, they're gonna, and, and the event that the Chief Park Ranger is out, then wouldn't he have those added duties of having to take over and oversee whatever needs to be taken care of?
Yes, and that's what this position, uh, or this individual would do. Um, and, you know, this, this department is kind of a re, um, I wanna say it's new, but it's, it's, uh, set up again, and so we didn't have any slots. And in previous discussions among the Commissioner's Court, you all mentioned that there was a Chief and Assistant Chief. So that's why, that's why I created the salary schedule that way, and we created this job description that way. And we, we titled it as an Assistant Chief Park Ranger. Um, but we felt that the, the salaries, um, they're all the same, thirty-two thousand, they're all making the same amount, so we would bump up that, um, position or that slot a little bit more because he's gonna have additional.
You know, I don't have a problem with the slot being created, I just wanna make sure that we have an equal opportunity for anyone that wishes to apply, and that we follow a process in which we advertise and we follow up. Or if you wanna give one individual additional duties and just keep him as a Ranger, I don't have a problem with that either, you know, you guys need to work that out.
Can we retable this and reword it for next, next Commissioner?
Move to table.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Sanchez, second by Commissioner Gatz, to table. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item J, consideration approval of a resolution authorizing the establishment of a Veterans Court to service, service the needs of the veteran population in Cameron County. Judge Nelson, how are you?
Basically, the Veterans Court is a specialty court, much like the drug. The Veterans Court is a specialty court, much like the Drug Divert Court. We've got a Drug Treatment Court, uh, that meets every Tuesday after five o'clock. The same judge, uh, my, as a matter of fact, I handled that one. And, uh, we get supplemental funding from the Governor's Office to cover the Drug Court Coordinator and cover some of the treatment and the testing. The Veterans Court is the, it fills a need that's, that really is required in Cameron County. It will be administered by one of the District Courts. Uh, it will be handled by a District Court, but we do need funding, uh, in order to be able to create it because it's gonna be a burden on the county otherwise. Uh, but more importantly, what we need from you right now is the authorization to create this court. It is not a standalone court like any other court. It is additional work that one of the courts would be doing.
What kind of funding are you talking about, Judge? Dollar amounts, yearly?
The, well, the Drug Divert Court runs on, on, uh, we get Governors, uh, funding somewhere around a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, most or minus. And that covers testing, that covers counseling, that covers treatment, that covers the Drug Court Coordinator, uh, and, and so we're looking for similar funding. The Veterans Court's gonna be created, that, that's gonna be created, it's gonna, it's gonna have some treatment differences. One of the problems that the, just, just as an overview, the, the Veterans Administration has a very good program on PTSD. We have veterans coming back that, uh, fall through the wayside. We've been having a hard time keeping track of how many veterans are actually in the system. We originally had an estimate of something like seventy, uh, with, that were on, I mean, twenty that were on probation. We've reevaluated, we've now got, I believe, over eighty, uh, that are on probation. But one of the problems is that they're not being tracked in jail as well. And the, the problem we have is these veterans come back and they're not assimilated into society as well, they're not prepared for that. They get angry, they, they've got other issues, we've got misdemeanor assault.
Where do they go now, Judge? If veterans have issues like?
They don't get treatment. They don't get treatment, that's where they go.
Judge.
Some of them go to the Veterans Administration, but you would be surprised how many suicides we have.
Yeah, but how, how would this?
That never count.
Educate me, I mean, how, how would this court help that?
Ju, excuse me, Judge, can you just explain how your divert court works, how it's a treatment court, not like a regular situation where someone's on probation?
Yeah, uh, and, and it is analogous to, to the Drug Divert Court. The Drug Divert Court, uh, deals with people that have a drug problem. Statistically, the research shows that for every dollar invested in drug treatment, we get, the society has a savings of two-point-six dollars for every drug, for every dollar. The Veterans Court would attempt to identify, uh, people that have emotional problems, a lot of them come in as family abuse, assaults, public intoxications, uh, things like that that are, that are related to their service, but they're not identified by the Veterans Administration as service-related. And, you know, and they come back, they're, they're, they're taught to handle millions of dollars of equipment, be in high-risk situations, they come back and they are, you know, common Joe. They, they, they're looking for jobs, they're, they're frustrated, they have tensions at home, uh, some of them commit suicide. After they're out, they're not, uh, identified as service-related. And so we, we have a major problem with our veterans. This is an attempt to identify veterans that have incidences with the law, from misdemeanor to felony, and brought into the system so that we can go ahead and get them incorporated into society and reduce the recidivism. The recidivism in Drug Court treatment has been one of the great successes nationally. We reduced the recidivism significantly with all our graduates. The Veterans Court has had a great deal of success. We've, uh, visited, I've visited the court in Tulsa, and their, their success rate with PTSD in particular has been great.
Judge, let me ask you a question, there's been some discussion, uh, at this level regarding this, and I think there's, there's a lot of support for it. Just a couple of questions or a couple of concerns, is one, as Commissioner Gatz mentioned, is the, is, how much is it gonna cost? And, and not for, that's gotta be a factor, I mean, we're looking at spending a million dollars probably on, on establishing a probate court that, you know, we're gonna have to find funding for that.
Judge, Judge, this is not a standalone court.
Okay.
It's not anything similar funding. In terms of the cost of the county, we hope to, the reason why we're asking for the authorization to create the court is so that we can go get funding from a national and a state basis, not a local basis. Not a local basis.
What would be, the other discussion that we've talked about is, and I don't know really where we're at on it, but discussion about the, the Three-Fifty-Seventh becoming a, a family court as well. Would you have a, a problem in that we ask that they convert that court to a family court slash Veterans Court?
Yeah, but the vet, it, it's not appropriate, because the Veterans Court, again, is not a standalone court. The, the, there is no court that I know of throughout the state that is a standalone court, other than some magistrate-run courts, for example, in San Antonio and other places, uh, that are funded by the county to a great extent.
Well, why, okay.
Judge, can you explain how your divert court works, how other cases come to your court? I don't think there's an understanding of that.
I'm a little concerned with going at another court because it's not on the agenda to talk about that. Um, so, I guess, I'm just trying to get, so why we cannot?
Well, it's analogous to the Divert Court, it's actually very similar. I handle, in, in, I handle my regular docket in the One Thirty-Eighth. In addition to that, I also run the Drug Divert Court, and I run the Drug Treatment Court because essentially that's what it is. It's, it's, that is, the funding for the staffing on that comes from the Governor's Office. So it does not have a direct impact, uh, to the county in terms of costing the county money. But I volunteered to do that. When this Drug Court first came up, it, there was an issue as to whether or not the adult probation was gonna lose its funding for the county unless a county of population over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand created the Drug Divert Court. That was a mandate from the Governor's Office.
But that's strictly just in your office, correct?
So that's what I volunteered for. Whoever's gonna handle the Veterans Court will probably volunteer for it as well.
Okay, so we don't know which court?
No.
Would take this?
No, and worst case, worst case scenario I have committed to do it.
It would, it would be you, right?
Yeah.
Now, what happens in the future where you or somebody retires and the next district judge that comes in does not wanna handle that?
Well, the, the political reality is, Judge, the political reality is that there's not a great deal of support for Drug Treatment Courts politically, there's not a lot of, uh, political positives on that. Although I think it's, it's one of the most rewarding things I do, because I see changes in people's lives in a positive way. I was a discount tire, the guy who, who, who repaired the flat on my, on my, on my car was a Drug Court graduate. And I talked to him after, this has been a year after he graduates, his family has been rehabilitated, he's doing well, and it's wonderful. Okay, so it's a positive thing. For Veterans Court, everybody wants to support the veterans. Veterans are very popular, they vote, they go out, I don't anticipate having a hard time finding somebody who wants to help veterans. It's a very popular thing, I don't anticipate that being a problem.
So then it would not be appropriate to ask that the Three-Fifty-Seventh become the designated court for family and veterans?
No, sir, no, sir.
That would not be appropriate?
No, sir, it would not.
Because you don't know if whomever runs is gonna undertake that.
We don't know who's gonna get appointed, we don't know who's gonna run, we don't know who gets elected, we don't know, I mean, one of the, one of the, one of the reasons why I did Drug Court is I no longer have children that are school age. So when I go home, the only one that's waiting for me is my wife, and that's okay, she's okay with this. It's a good cause.
You, you are on TV, you realize that?
No, I didn't.
That's a great compliment to your wife, sir.
Thank you for.
Well, I don't know, I don't know why he got all flustered, I mean, but you did.
Well, you put me on the spot. Okay, any other questions on this?
I, I don't have any questions, I was just, I was just, no, I don't.
What we're asking for is authorization to create the specialty court.
At no cost.
Veterans Court, subject to funding that, that we're able to get.
Okay, and this, and this is really no, no local cost?
It, I mean, it's gonna have indirect costs.
I mean, it can be some nominal, I mean, I'm not, you know.
It's gonna have indirect costs.
Well, we're not creating a court per se, it's an added duty to an existing court.
Yes, sir, correct.
And I think the way that I read the resolution is we're creating like a brand-new court.
Right, no, sir.
Okay? So we need to make sure.
The economic impact to the county is not anywhere near what creating a brand-new court is.
Well, I think we need to.
A standalone court.
We need to include.
This is not a standalone court.
David Garcia, we need to include on there to establish a Veterans Court in an existing court.
Just a Veterans, a specialty court, that's all I'm.
Yeah, but it's gotta be within an existing court.
Yes, sir.
Or to be hosted by an existing court.
We need to make sure, look, every time we do this, the language gets changed by the time it works its way up the food chain. And the last thing that, that we want is for all of a sudden somebody misinterpret this and creates the Five Hundred and Fifty-Fifth Veterans Court, where we're having enough issues already with some of these courts.
I understand, Judge, I understand.
All right, so just make sure that the language in that is very specific, that it's not the creation of another court, it's just adding a responsibility. Now, in, within that bill, they don't assign it to any specific court either, do they?
No.
It's just remember?
It, it's, it's not a legislative action. This is not legislative action that we're requesting from the legislature. We're asking this court to authorize.
Okay, so then why is it even on there? What, then what wording does he have to change?
To get grant funding.
Yeah, but you don't need that at the legislative's level based on what the judge is saying.
It's at the legislative level, right?
On the legislative level, we don't need it.
On the family.
Because we're not creating.
Okay.
A standalone court.
All right.
This is authorizing the creation by the county of a specialty court that's handled by an existing.
Move to approve, Judge.
Second.
Okay, we had a motion, a second.
Thank you for clarification.
Yeah, that's not the way I understood it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Comments?
But before you leave, you know, I, Judge Nelson?
Yes, sir.
An item, we have Item V, Judge, can we, can we go to that real quick?
What is Item V?
Is a family court.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna talk about that.
Can we ask?
Yeah, let me go ahead and get this one out of the way. Uh, yes, sir? The other, sir?
The taller one. Come on, don't fight, come on, guys.
Everybody wants to be on TV.
Well, I just wanted to let you know also, Tobin Lefler with the Adult Probation Department. This is gonna represent a great cost savings to the jail. Dean at the infirmary has let us know, uh, they're spending thousands and thousands of dollars on the veterans that are incarcerated, because they have to get them to their appointments, get them their medication, uh, and the county's footing the bill for all that. When we release them onto this program, the VA's going to step in and that'll be, uh, no longer be the county's responsibility.
That is a direct savings.
Right.
And that's something, okay.
So, I mean, there, there's a financial interest here too. And at this point, we're just asking for the blessing of the Commissioner's Court.
You got it.
To move forward, uh, there's no fiscal note attached to it as far as, uh, county monies at this time, and if we get our grant, uh, like we hope we will, then, uh, it should come in no burden to the county at all.
Okay, right, thank you, sir. The other, sir?
Can you talk about Item V?
No, not yet, let's, let's get through with this one first, and then we'll talk about that one. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Let's go to, let's skip over to, uh, is it Item V?
V.
Discussion possible action regarding the, a resolution related to House Bill Eighteen Eleven, is that what that is, family court?
Yes.
Okay, who's gonna speak to that one? Well, just, Arnold, if you can, tell us where we are right now with that particular bill. Okay? Yes, sir?
Uh, I, I'd like for you to not leave yet, Judge, if you could, you know?
Yeah, I've got a docket waiting for me.
You've got a docket?
Why, what item does he, do you need him for? V, that's the family court.
It, uh, the status of the, I mean, it's, it's been referred to committee, um, pending a, a hearing request, I think we, uh, we had talked about different language regarding that bill. Um, when I spoke to alleged counsel, they'd say what, 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 what the judge said earlier, we don't need, there, it doesn't require legislative action if we wanna designate a court to handle veterans' issues. I know that was, that was one of the, the discussions we had. Um, right now, the way the bill is drafted, it gives preference to family law, uh, cases. Um, that's the way that the, the, the other family court is set up here in Cameron County, that's the way they're set up throughout the rest, through the entire part of the state. Um, it's just up to you if you wanna leave it that way, or if you wanna see if we can proceed more strict language saying that it is, I don't know if you wanna.
That, that's what the thoughts that, I mean, we created a family court already, not too long ago, that gives preference to family law.
Yes, sir.
Now we're creating another one, taking advantage of a, of a vacant position that cannot be defended by a sitting judge, you know, and we're, we're burden, you know, we're, we're putting a burden on that court and making it now, from what Arnold was telling me, a family court totally.
Well, Commissioner Garcia, with all due respect, it actually, uh, there's, anybody who runs for that court should know what they're getting into.
Right.
And if it's designated a family court primarily, uh, they'll know what they're getting, so it doesn't come as, as any surprises. But the highest burden on all the district courts is being a general jurisdiction court, because you handle everything from capital murder to divorces.
Right.
Most of the courts are general jurisdiction, even the family court is a general jurisdiction. It has the ability to do that. The reason for that is if we need to trade cases between us, any one of the other courts can do that. So it's not a problem.
Well, trading cases in our court system has been an issue in the past, so I think that practice should be kept to a minimum, but that's another aside altogether. My concern is that if we had a sitting judge in that court today, this bill would not be presented to us.
I don't know who that sitting judge would be. And I don't know if he would object.
Whoever would be.
All I know is that as a matter of collegiality, we as judges do not interfere with each other's courts.
No, I think what I'm hearing is that if there would not be a vacancy in that court today, this bill or the potential that would not have been introduced to convert this from a general jurisdiction to a family court.
Well, in terms of economic impact, which is one of the things that concerns you and concerns us all on taxpayers' money, is, for example, the family court that is now does not have a district attorney assigned to it. That has saved the county a couple hundred thousand dollars because of the related expenses with paralegals, district attorneys, and the staff that's required to support that. By doing this, the county should realize some savings as well.
If we convert the 357th into a family court...my only concern with giving it preference, like preferential, is that...I've said this before, there's just no romance in dealing with family law cases in these courts. So consequently, you know, they're reluctant. What I hear from other judges, they're just reluctant. They want to...they don't want to do that because it just takes up so much time and it causes a backlog in other criminal and civil cases. The problem with the 440...is it the 444th, the other family court? I don't know who monitors and controls. Is it controlled at the district court level where if it's a family dispute, it all goes to the 444th?
The district clerk's office takes...makes sure that, I think it's 50% of all cases in that court are family law. Then the rest are distributed. By creating the 357th as a family court law, it's going to reduce the amount of family law cases on the rest of the courts.
Right, I understand that. And who monitors?
And it also should save the county money by not requiring an extra district attorney with the 357th.
I understand that. Who monitors this 50% number?
The clerk's office.
Okay, so does anybody monitor that number?
We've met on that regularly. We've discussed that and had it checked at least twice that I remember personally at the Board of Judges meetings.
Is that a yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so somebody to monitor 50%. Okay. Because I think that...and I think I've spoken to Arnold and maybe David as well, that if we're going to support making the 357th a family court, it's got to be a family court, 100% family court, nothing else. That's what I would like to see happen.
And the Board of Judges has no problems with that. That initially was what some of the discussion was. It went back to family court because there was a pushback from the legislative side where they said they preferred to be the same as the 444th. And that's how that got to where it's at politically.
Yeah, but that court was handling a lot of criminal cases. Is that not going to backlog the other courts, you know?
Well, I would...you know, I'm not familiar enough with that area, but I think what would happen, it would relieve the other district courts from handling as many family law. And it would, I guess, facilitate or expedite the handling of other cases because they're no longer...how long does a typical family case last? Is it somewhat longer?
The case cannot be heard for at least 60 days after it's filed. If there are child custody disputes, those normally are regular civil trial. They can last anywhere from two days to a week and a half to two weeks. So that usually is the life of that kind of case. It's usually very contentious. The nature of the beast is that people are losing their family, their emotions are high. The risk factor in terms of risk to the judiciary staff and everything else also increases with family law cases. A lot of the violence that has been committed nationally has been surrounding family court cases. So there are other implications to it, but it does relieve the other courts from a higher percentage of family law cases.
I think from my perspective, if we're going to pursue the family court issue in the 357th, which I don't know yet if we're going to do that, but if we're going to do that, then I'd like to see it be 100% family court, 100%. And not give the clerk or anybody that, you know, that option of, well, we're going to give you X. That's what I would like to see. If there's no objection from you all, then I think it gives us some, you know, some cover.
We have not voted for it, but I don't think there would be an objection from the Board of Judges. We have not voted on that specific issue, but I do not think you would have any objection from the Board of Judges.
Well, some of the district judges that I've spoken to have not expressed any...they didn't have a problem with that. They did not have a problem. Well, let me take it back. They didn't have a problem with converting that into a veterans/family court, but if that's no longer an issue, I don't believe that they would have a problem. Can you check with them just as a...maybe poll them and see if there's a problem with it and just let us know before we move forward?
Who should I communicate that to?
To me.
Okay.
You know, or maybe to Arnold and/or to David and Pete.
I'll be glad to do that.
Okay. All right.
Anything else, sir?
I just don't see how we would want to lose general jurisdiction in a court and make it strictly family court. It makes no sense to me in terms of efficiencies to the county and serve the public.
The sense that it makes to me is that it alleviates those family law cases from being heard in every single district court, which frees them up.
Yeah, but you know what? That's the nature of the beast, you know?
Well, we can change the beast.
Yeah, I know. The nature of our court system is that, you know, judges are not specialized for the most part. Probate court, I think we're looking at a specialty type of work that needs to be done.
Well, the nature of that court is important, and a probate specialty court is supported.
But then judges, for the most part, you know, do general jurisdiction in their courts, you know? I mean, it's...
You know, there's merit to both arguments, but if we're talking about expediting cases and the workload, creating that as 100% family court would...if they're not objecting to it, I mean, I don't see why we would.
I will poll the judges, and I'll get back to you.
And let me know.
May I be dismissed, Judge?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Judge.
Arnold, anything else on that one?
I guess, depending on what the...when he gets back with us and changing the language.
You know, if you can do it pretty quickly.
Yes.
Because that way we can run our traps. Okay? Thank you. All right. That was item V. V, do I hear a motion to acknowledge?
Move to not make it or acknowledge?
Just acknowledge.
Not...acknowledging doesn't mean that we're...
Well, I don't know if that decision's been made yet until we hear back from the Board of Judges.
Okay.
But if you want to make a motion to not do it, that's fine. I just...well, you made a motion first.
No, I was going to second your motion to acknowledge.
I mean, we can support the resolution in favor of the family court. How we craft it, we can put that...we can present the language to you all then.
But I don't know if there's even consensus at this point to move forward with creating, even naming it a family court.
The benefit...and Judge Nelson brought up a good point. The benefit is if the person running for it knows it's going to be heavily family, then you're going to get people running for it that have an interest in family court cases. And that, for the benefit of our citizens, the people that are having their case heard, is big because for, you know, we have thousands of cases that go through our court system. But a lot of times, these family law cases are that only one...that's the only case that that family's going to have ever in the court system, and it's very important to them. And so when you have a judge that's willing to sit there and spend several hours in a hearing, hearing temporary orders, then, you know, it's an attribute to someone who's willing to do that. And sometimes if you don't have someone willing to do that and they push it along, then the people...the litigants aren't going to get the benefit. But if you have someone running for that court that isn't very interested in family law and practices mostly family law, then they're probably going to better serve our citizens when it comes to these family law issues. So, I mean, there is, I think, a true benefit by having it designated so that people that run know upfront, hey, this is what I'm getting myself into.
All right. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge? Or is there another motion?
Well, do we need a resolution of some sort here? I mean, this is regarding a resolution, but I don't see any resolution attached to this.
I don't think any of them have resolutions.
I would make a motion to create a resolution in support of creating the family court, the 357th as a family court.
100%.
I would say...I think the way it works is the other court...the judge said 50. I think the 444th actually gets 60% of all family law cases.
The statute states we'll give preference to family...there is no percentage in the statute that states or that's written in there. It just says it would give preference to family law cases.
Well, what we could do is just split them half and half, family law cases to be split half and half into those two courts. So all we have to do is say preference, and then the clerk's office could just split them.
Well, the bill that's included, I don't know if this is the bill that was filed.
Yes.
Says that it will be a family court.
Correct.
Okay? It doesn't say give preference, give...
Well, when you read the statute, it references to in the statute, it says we'll give preference to family law matters. It's the way it's written in the code.
All right. Are we ready to do something with this one or no? I still believe that it should be designated as strictly a family court. That's been my position from early on, and it's going to continue to be that.
But we have a motion?
I think right now, Judge, you have...you've asked for a motion to acknowledge, but you didn't get one.
Right.
And Dan has one, or Commissioner Sanchez has one, to create a resolution for the...in support of a family court. If...I was going to ask this. Do we have time, Arnold, to give some thought to how to phrase a resolution to, you know, that may satisfy a majority of the quorum?
We probably have until tomorrow.
Oh, until tomorrow.
I mean, we need to get a sub...if it's going to change, the language is going to change, then we need to have a substitute and that get drafted and get...so we can present it to the committee in the hearing, but...
So really what you're saying is we need to be...to know what kind of family court we're trying to create here.
Right.
Or reclassify, I guess you would say.
I'll second that motion.
The motion being to designate it as a family court?
Yes.
Okay? That was moved by Commissioner Sanchez, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez, to designate it as a family court. What do you want to do about the...in terms of the language on percentages? Just leave it like that or what?
We don't have to give a percentage, right?
We need to create it first.
It would probably say either the way it's written now, give preference to, or strictly be family law cases would be, I guess, the only two versions we can put in there. Percentages won't...
If we say give preference to, then it'll be like the other family court, and they'll get 50/50 pretty much.
Right, or if the district clerk, if you all decided that to have the district clerk give all family law cases to this particular court, so you all can do that.
But that leaves it at the discretion of the district clerk.
Correct.
Right. Well, is there anyone here from the district clerk's office that could talk about this? Eric, how are the cases?
You know, there are a number of percentage of cases filed, or all of them at work.
You know, I don't think we can tell the court what to do. We can't tell your office what to do, you know? We've seen what's happened historically in the past. Look who we are today, and we're going to depend on them to take care of this issue for us? I don't think so, you know?
I mean... 60%. So a lot of cases in there should have 60% of all family law cases controlling the...
Well, let me ask a question.
So all of the family law cases that are filed in Cameron County, 60% of them go to that court?
And what is the consequence for not having 60%?
So there's only 40%.
They only need to have...
No, but what is the consequence if it doesn't meet that 60% threshold? What happens?
Judge, let me interrupt here just a second. Mr. Garza?
Yes.
Eric?
Which one?
You just said 60% of all family law cases are filed in the 444th. Okay, and I'm not necessarily doubting that, but I want to make sure that you mean what you say because there's a lot of family law cases filed. And isn't the statute designed to assure that a preference is given to family law cases in the 444th so that his docket should have more family cases than not, and the rest of the family cases that are not filed in his court are spread randomly among the rest of the courts? Okay. So in essence, then, all of our district courts have family law jurisdiction, and let's say 51 out of 100 of them at least go...no, I'm sorry. 50...you know, 51, 50% or more go of Judge Sanchez's dockets are family law cases. Okay. All right, so that being so, the...if we were to treat the new court the same way that Judge Sanchez's court is working...
Which is the way the bill is drafted right now, to treat it the same way. The percentages that come either through the Board of Judges but not through legislative action. The percentage numbers are 60% or 51%. The only thing that's through legislation and through the statute is the preference to family law.
Okay, and I have one other question about this, and that is if we were to go to a court that only gets family law cases, how does that fit into the scheme for random assignment of cases? Do we just say, okay, if we have one court with 50-plus percent family law jurisdiction, you know, or family law cases, we have another court that only has family law cases, do we figure out then from a total of how many cases they can handle and then assign the rest of them on a random basis to the other district courts? Is that how that would work?
They would all end up in those two courts, Bruce.
Well, what's wrong with that? How about if we just...right now, there's family courts that are 60...according to Eric, there's 60% going to the one court. The rest are split up. Why don't we do where that stays the same, but that other 40% go to this family court? And then the other district judges really get no family court cases assigned to them. That way, the 357th still becomes a general jurisdiction, but it becomes a family court. So in other words, the only family court cases assigned will be the 444th and the 357th. The other district judges...
Then you wouldn't be doing anything legislatively. I mean, you wouldn't need legislative action to...
No, you do need it to get that assignment, to get the assignment of the...because right now, the 444th has to have majority of their cases be family. The 60 is a number...I don't know where they come up with 60, but all they have to have is 50% plus one case.
Yeah. The issue is that you can't break it up into percentages at the state level.
Right.
Here locally, you can do that after the legislation.
And it's the Board of Judges that vote on it and do it, right?
I think the reason you do need it legislatively because you don't want a district judge that gets elected coming in and say, look, I don't want to do family law.
And what I don't understand, we just emulate the 444th court. And then later, they end up splitting the percentages once the court's created the way it's created.
But it would remain general jurisdictional plus...
Plus family.
I don't have a problem with that.
It'd be focusing on family, just like the 444th.
Just like the 444th.
The only change will be that none of the other district judges will get family court cases. It'll all be going to either one of these two.
That should be the way.
Wouldn't we be overburdening the...
Because they're not going to...
That's all they're going to be hearing.
They can still hear other cases. They're just going to have to give preference to family law cases.
If you take away from the other district judges, okay, and they're not going to hold any family law cases, wouldn't you be overburdening way ahead of time? I mean, everything's going to go between Judge Sanchez and whoever comes in.
But they won't be hearing...
Judge Sanchez is already getting sixty percent of the cases.
It's gonna lighten his load a little, and it's gonna share the work with the, with the other court.
Yeah, and plus, that the other court won't be listening to criminal and civil cases. Their priority will be family court cases, so, you know, everybody, everyone's gonna have enough work to do. I don't think it'll be-
I think the, the-
The other courts would have jurisdiction too, but they would concentrate on family law.
Right. So, all, the entire family law docket in the county will go between these two-
Those two courts.
That's correct, and I, I don't have any problem with that.
And I think that's something that through the district clerk's office, they can make sure that-
But we, we wouldn't be designating the percentages, we would just say majority of the docket, preference.
They would just say family law, we'll give preference to family law matters. The way, the way the 444th is, is currently crafted.
I don't have a problem with that type of resolution.
Good, and then we can, we can punt it over to-
And we'll leave it the way-
Eric, if and when that passes here, then at, at the district clerk's office, and that will be the plan, that no, no family court cases will be assigned to any other district judges except for the 357th and the 444th?
Right.
Well, well, we're letting you know what, what's gonna happen, alright?
Can I, can I ask just one last thing? Is, is a single exclusive family law court, plus Judge Sanchez's preference, enough to handle all family law cases in this county?
That's my concern.
Is that something that the district courts, as a board of judges, in connection with working with the, uh, the district clerk, can figure out and assign, you know, in terms of, uh, you know, the dockets to these two family-oriented courts? Is, 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 I haven't looked at the legislation to do it. Is that the way it works?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's move on, but can you get with Judge Nelson, let him know what the latest dialogue is?
Yes, sir.
Ask him if they would have a problem with that, where you designate these two courts as, as family courts, so the other district judges don't get any other family court cases at all?
Okay.
Ask him if they're okay with that. If they are, then that's the language that you, that you put in.
Okay.
Question, Judge?
Answer. Yes, sir.
I call for question.
You got it. Oh, what's the question?
Let's vote.
I'm ready. Make a motion. We already had a motion in a second.
You know what kind of resolution we need, right?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item K, consideration of possible approval of resolution opposing House Bill 3546 relating to the zoning authority of an eligible barrier island municipality.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Hernandez. Anybody wanna say something?
Yes, Judge, your honor, your commissioners. A couple of weeks ago, I became aware of this legislation that the city of South Padre Island had filed through their lobbying firm, Hillco and Company. Uh, we had a zoning meeting last week here at the courthouse. We were pleased to have Commissioners Hernandez and Benavides in attendance, as well as Legal, along with our MA member, Rodri Solmareda, who is a former zoning mission, uh, commission member. This, this is an attempt by South Padre Island to basically strip away from, to Cameron County, their zoning authority. And it's only just the first of a series of steps that South Padre Island is partaking on its behalf to take away the authority of the county, uh, north of the city. Uh, the zoning commission is hopeful that, uh, this commission as a body in whole will take in an active and a, a very assertive position in fighting back South Padre Island's attempt to take away what you already possess. Thank you.
Is this the only area that would be impacted by this bill? Is it a local bill?
It would also take care of, uh, it's a local bill, yes, sir.
Okay, alright.
And, uh, some of us did have a meeting with Mayor Pinkerton last Thursday.
Last Thursday.
Sophie and I visited with him, we had a discussion with him, we expressed our concerns on this bill and some other zoning processes that they were undertaking, and, uh, I think that, uh, they'll probably at least let us know if they file something else now.
Okay. Add a motion, a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item L, consideration of possible approval of a resolution in support of House Bill 2352, Senate Bill 1089-
Move to approve.
Relating to the operation of the Texas Windstorm Insurance Association. Moved by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Sanchez. Any discussion?
Uh, one thing, Judge. On Monday, we were at a meeting at which the Texas, um, Department of Insurance was considering taking TUIA into a receivership, which is basically a bankruptcy position. There was numerous folks from the coast. Some of us that were appointed to the Coastal Windstorm Task Force were there, a number of us were, from Brownsville all the way to Beaumont, uh, a lot of discussion. We participated, I gave public comment in regards to the position that this county has taken, and the Gulf Coast area has taken, along with about thirty other people. And, uh, the best that occurred at that meeting was that the item was tabled until May twenty-eighth, to hopefully allow for a legislative fix to the problem. That does not mean that the commissioner of insurance cannot individually take TUIA into a receivership. That means that the board of insurance decided to postpone their action into relinquishing their authority to the commissioner to put TUIA in a receivership. And it's a really complicated thing, but at the end of the day, if something is not done, all of us in Cameron County can expect to see our windstorm insurance increase by about at least forty percent. And if that doesn't hurt our developments on the island and inland, you know, I don't know what will. Uh, the discussion is that in the mortgage agreements that exist today, the Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae agreements, there are clauses in those agreements that automatically allow the banking industry to assess mortgage holders with added fees, whether they want to or not, to protect their interest. So, there's a whole lot, uh, going on here that is critically important to Cameron County and our area, and I ask for your support of this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comment? Add a motion, a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item N, consideration of possible approval of a resolution in support of House Bill 3125 relating to route designation for the issuance of a permit for the movement of oversized and overweight vehicles.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Sanchez, second by Commissioner Garza. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item O, consideration of possible approval of a resolution in support of House Bill 1815 to authorize Cameron County the ability to adopt a venue tax through hotel motel occupancy tax and a short-term car rental tax to fund and develop projects in Cameron County.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Sanchez, second by Commissioner Benavides. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item O, item Q, discussion of 2013 legislation and possible action pertaining thereto, including but not limited to preparation of resolutions supporting or objecting to certain bills. Who's gonna dispute? Anything that you wanna add?
I don't know that there's anything else that we've missed.
I think this came up in the context of, of having a catch-all as, as, as things were moving along here. So, you can table that item.
That being the case, can we add a bill that's not-
Yes.
We could, that's what this is designed to catch, right here.
Okay, yesterday, some of us, you know, spent the day visiting with the Appropriations Committee of the Senate and also the House in regards to restoring the local grant funding through the Wildlife, Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, so that we can continue to get community parks in our communities, both in the county area and the cities funded. I would like to have this court go on record, supporting that endeavor. We have, in our area, over the past twenty-some years, received over thirty-two million dollars worth of money that has been matched by counties or cities, to the tune of fifty percent on these matches, to develop parks such as La Paloma, El Ranchito, uh, Rioondo, uh, Laureles, Cameron Park, you know, Pete Benavides Park, every park in our county, for the most part, has been a recipient of those monies. Ten years ago, there was twenty-three million dollars in that pot. The last biennium, there was six-hundred thousand dollars in that pot. You know, that's how much, it's been decreased. It's a sporting goods tax that we pay when we buy. Our little leagues buy uniforms, they buy bats, they buy equipment, you know? The government has diverted those funds into operationally to fund their state park system, instead of funding the local parks in our communities that create the demand for the products that are creating the tax dollars that, that are being used to fund the parks. And all we're saying is, fund at least fifty million dollars per biennium for the local match grant funds, so that we can at least have an equal chance of applying for that money. And I would move that we, uh, support that resolution, and I know we-
Do you know, is there a rider already?
Sir?
Is, is there a rider already?
It's a second priority right now. There is a rider that will be introduced by Representative Larson. Uh, we talked to the rest of the Appropriations Committee members yesterday. There was absolutely no objection. The only concern that Renee Oliva had was that, you know, we don't want money taken away from a program in Cameron County to fund the fifteen million on the park systems. So, he says, as long as there's transparency in where the money comes from, he would support it. And along with the rest of the Appropriations Committee members that we visited, it was very positive. Chuyna Juza will more than likely be on the, um, conference committee between the House, and, and he also agreed that he would support that. You know, he introduced a rider for half of the amount that, that was cut, but it didn't get cut out. It's just not funded. It's in the budget. It's in HB one and, uh, SB one also. So, a resolution from the county would be great.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garza, I have a second, by Commissioner Sanchez. Discussion?
Yes, sir, Judge. Um, we also have met with Senator Lucio's office and staff on the bill that came up earlier regarding solid waste enforcement, and the issue regarding trying to, trying to tailor it and, and connect it with the Health and Safety Code. They are working on that legislation and trying to submit a substitute that will address it in that way. That way, it's not connected to the ad valorem tax, uh, uh, bill that, uh, people in rural Cameron County will get, so, that's, uh, working its way, and, and hopefully we'll have a substitute to that bill.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mention that. Thank you, David. Uh, Monday, we met with them and worked on the wording of that particular piece of legislation to include it in the Health and Safety Code, which would make it something that would be applicable through the JP courts in requiring each individual household that has a utility connection for water and, uh, utilities to provide a solid waste disposal plan of some sort to the county. So, that would mean that if, if our inspectors are driving around on trash day and they don't see a trash can in front of a residence, they could actually go and say, hey, you know, the, we require that you have a solid waste disposal plan. What is your plan? How do you dispose of your household trash? And it is becoming more prevalent. I think, uh, four weeks ago, we had a preliminary approval of a plat in which we were doing a number of lots in a very concentrated area that were like from one-fourth of an acre size to a little bit larger, with thirty-foot frontage in front of the street that they were on. And, you know, these places all produce trash. Where is this trash going? We've gotta deal with it. So, I think we have that already covered in the resolution, right? Yeah.
And also, I would just like to acknowledge Commissioner Garza spent Monday driving up, all day in Austin, coming back Monday night, and then yesterday, the same thing. Uh, and just, you know, Commissioner, I, I wanna publicly thank you for taking your time and doing that. I know that it, it, you know, making those one-day trips are, are hard, and, and, you know, you're, you definitely deserve the recognition. I just want the folks to know that, you know, you're out there putting yourself in long days, uh, and the staff too. David went on Monday, and then Pete and Javier went, uh, I mean, uh, Javier and Joe went, uh, yesterday, and so, uh-
And then we spent Tuesday with Parks and Wildlife.
Tuesday, we spent with the Parks and Wildlife that came down from Austin. So, this legislative time takes a lot of effort, and I just wanna acknowledge you for, uh, giving that dedication, Commissioner.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Judge, there was one other, uh, possible bill we may wanna support. Mr. Houston is here and had, has, uh, given me this morning Senate Bill Number 1560, which I think emanates out of the city of Galveston. And it's a, you know, presumably, uh, a bill to allow a continuous doon system, and it's a, adds to do with dedicating easements. I haven't had time this morning to really study it in detail, but it's something that we could want to support if it is consistent with our own beach bill that is now pending before, uh, the legislature for redrawing lines of vegetation, setting retaining laws, and all that sort of thing. I, I just mentioned it to you in case you wanted to ask anything about that.
Alright. I had a motion, a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item R, discussion of possible action regarding Cameron County's legislative agenda. Anything, Arnold? Anything different? Do I hear a motion to table?
I have one, one concern. The travel issue, for people going back and forth to different hearings, they're, they're coming up kind of frequently, and, uh, have we set money aside for that? And are we requiring approval before they go, or we kinda have to do it after the fact? I wanna make sure that nobody gets into-
Well, it's kinda hard, because these, these things are moving very quickly. Um, I was just told yesterday late afternoon about going up Monday, um, for a hearing, and that is still pending? I mean, is that for sure?
I think what we've done in the past, we run the travel by the auditor's office. Uh, they approve it, then we put it, we place it back on the agenda at the, at the next available meeting.
Hadn't we approved that earlier in the year, though, because of the legislative session?
We talked about it. I know we did.
Yeah, well, I don't think we can do that with our travel policy, but we do run it through the auditor's office, they sign off, and then we place it on the agenda.
Well, what I did, what we did is, on Monday, we used, like, David Garcia's truck, and all, all of us went together at the same time, so, we had gas as far as-
And you all came up the same day? You went up and came back the same day?
On Wednesday, we took my truck, and I made Javier Mendez pay for gas, you know? Because I don't have a budget for it, so I said, Javier, this is a parks, the majority of the day we spent on parks, even though we did visit with the Texas Aviation Division also.
We can front you some money if you need some money for gas, David.
No, I mean, I mean, that's-
Well, let's, let's go back-
He was happy to do it, because they needed to be there.
Well, sometimes you gotta do it, but that's, I mean, that's a good point, but-
Well, my point, I know Tony was in Austin Monday and Tuesday, and he had to stay, and it's kinda like, sometimes the hearings get canceled, so you have to stay an extra day.
It's hard.
You have to call in, you can't call in for permission, so we kinda have to give him a little freedom to-
I mean, get it up at four to go and be there by noon or eleven, and then come in, but you, and then everybody wants to talk to you at five, because that's when they get done with all their stuff, so they keep you there until seven, so then you get here at two or three, it's tough.
Well, it's, it hasn't been an issue, so- Okay, so, what are we gonna do about Monday? Do you know yet, or do you?
We'll follow the, the same procedure.
No, no, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about whether we go or not. Just let everybody know. So, yes, for sure?
You have to go?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, it's not for sure that it's gonna be at one o'clock, because I think the email said that it might spill into Tuesday, so-
Okay.
But we can talk about it.
It's not a state holiday, it's just a county holiday.
Right. Okay, alright, thanks. Anything else?
So, you take it case by case cases.
Alright, we had, uh, a motion, a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item, item S, discussion of possible action regarding the purchase of equipment for Office JP Precinct Two Place Three? Whose is that? I thought we already had, uh, the equipment set aside for that office. That's the new JP, right?
Yes, that's the new JP. Um, I think some of the, the costs, we're looking at about seven thousand dollars to set that up for four computers.
But I thought we already had that-
Yeah, what happened to the stuff that was in the other courts?
Well, that's, that's one thing, when I discussed with Joe, uh, you know, that those employees that are, that are, that are, I guess, stationed at, uh, at other courts around, they're gonna be making the move, will be taking their, their, their equipment with them. Uh, the only one that we're gonna need is for the actual, for the JP to have computer system, but, uh, but like the printers and, and the fax machine and all that stuff, we do gonna need to have that set up. They don't have that set up in the other courts.
Yep, but there was one in-
In Rioondo?
Oh, okay.
And, yeah.
You know, I mean, and they had computers there. And they have furniture there.
There should be a full comp-
Yeah, because there was a constable's office that's no longer operating.
Right.
And the, and, well, two of them.
Then I guess we can work to, to-
And a JP office that's no longer operating. They should have-
And there's furniture there too, not only-
There should be plenty of equipment, that we shouldn't have to buy new equipment.
Furniture and equipment.
Yeah, and a copier, or they-
There's a copier that I think is on a-
Yeah, on a lease?
On a lease basis too.
Alright, do I hear a motion to table the item, and just ask y'all to continue working and-
Yeah, we'll continue working on it.
Move to table.
And locate all this equipment. Moved by Commissioner Sanchez, second by Commissioner Garza. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item T, discussion of possible action regarding resolution related to House Bill 3861?
Move to approve.
Well, the-
What is that one?
That's the probate court.
Probate court?
Uh, just as long as, uh, the court's aware that it's gonna cost us around a million dollars to go and set that up, and-
It's gonna cost a million dollars, right? Is that the estimate that we're getting?
More, yeah, about a million dollars.
Set up a probate court.
That's not operating costs, that's just to house them, is what I'm, is what I'm-
Well, no, that, that's gotta be operating cost.
A million to house?
We're talking about construction. We're talking about construction.
I'm sorry?
This is construction cost.
Of a probate court. A million dollars to construct.
We, we had a rough estimate, about one-point-five million dollars.
We're talking about, hold on.
Go ahead.
One-point-five, a million dollars to, to, and where are you gonna build it?
You know, why don't we give, uh, the probate to the other half of the families?
Yeah, why don't we put it into San Manito annex?
There was a, there was an issue we discussed about, uh, expanding the, um, east side of the judicial building at about one-point-five million dollars. That would add about seven thousand square feet. There's no reason this new court couldn't be included in that area, along with the, um, three JP courts that'll be there. Well, yeah, but you're, but you're, you're also expanding for, it's not just for that particular court, it'd be a total expansion.
So, so that million is for all the expansion in the courthouse, not just this one court?
It'd be one, one, one and a half, probably.
Yeah, we had looked at some rough numbers on the east side on, uh, is it Tenth Street, Eleventh, Tenth, I think?
Tenth.
Expanding towards Tenth, and it was a very rough, rough preliminary estimate that, that we came up with at about a million dollars.
Well, we're doing an expansion over there, the judicial building, Pete.
Almost half a million, and it's very, very limited, I mean, real small space. That, that, and, and that one, and that particular one, I think, the, the roof, which, you know, a lot of times is the most expensive one, times is the most expensive one, the roof in that case is only like two, 300 square feet. So, it's a very small area. On, on this one, it'd be a lot more. So, yeah, we're looking at a million, million and a half.
Let me ask you though, if, if we're looking at, at changing some of the proceeds of where they're going to go, that, that last issue that we had, we've talked about the basketball courts and all that, can we utilize some of those bond proceeds to fix this, to address?
Is that being paid for by park administration, no?
No, because very little of that was park. Very little of those funds were park, were park, were park money.
Yeah, any, any, any funds that are left over or that are in any project can be reprogrammed into another project that was already in the list. And that particular project was in the list, so...
Okay. So, then, I understood that it was the operations were going to be a million dollars. What are the operational costs going to be? I think it's going to be higher than a normal county court of law because you've got to hire a whole bunch of different folks.
I don't think it'd be that high. I don't, I don't think it'd be that high, would it?
I think it's going to be at least a couple of hundred thousand more than a normal, because you've got to hire certain specialty people for that probate court.
You need a CPA, you need investigators.
Excuse me. I had come up with an operational cost and I, I didn't bring it with me, but I do have the information. I think it was about probably close to half a million, if not.
That's what I was thinking, about five or six hundred thousand.
Operationally, yes. Because you have specialized, you know, personnel that you're going to meet.
How much is a normal court at law, county court? I thought it was way over $400,000.
Almost like 250, 300?
Mm-hmm. If not, yeah. 250, if, it's 300. And I think included in, in that cost is also, no, I was thinking about something else. No, but you have, you have additional staff that is going to be required by the county clerk because you're going to create a special probate court, which is going to move cases specifically for probate. And somebody's going to have to handle these files. So, your county clerk is going to be up as well.
Martha, has anybody put a pencil to how much it's going to cost us to create this probate court? And the reason I'm asking is because, you know, we end up supporting a lot of these projects that are good endeavors, but then when it comes time to pay the bill, oh, wait a minute. We don't want to, no, no, we don't, we can't do that. Well, you know, you can't have it both ways. You can't vote to create this knowing it's going to cost a million dollars or whatever the number is. And then when it comes time to pay the fiddler, well, you know, we, we, we don't want to pay.
I did receive an email because they were trying to, they were doing a fiscal note on it and I did give them the information. And the construction cost for a probate court is approximately a million dollars dependent.
Well, that doesn't, that doesn't bother me as much because that, that's a one-shot deal, okay? To me, it's that constant M and O that, you know, that, that we're going to include in the budget. And that's almost half a penny on the tax rate. And that's what we have to look at. And I look at it in terms of what's a tax rate going to have to go to pay for this and/or just to stay even. And so, that would cost about half a penny, maybe a little bit less. So, right off the bat, when we, when we do this, we, unless we're going to cut someplace else, then we're adding, you know, half a penny to the tax rate right off the bat without anything else. No raises, no, nothing.
That's correct, yes.
That's correct. All right. So, what do you want to do?
Does it have to happen this biennium? I mean, can we go another two years?
I think you're just, well, yeah, we can, or not do it at all.
We could go forever. One of the, one of the problems in, in, in not doing this is the exposure.
No, I agree with you. I mean, I'm not, I mean, something that you got to...
Yeah, but we've been exposed since we've been here.
No, not us. It's more so the judges that are...
Well, but the court too, because, I mean, as a commissioner's court, we have to give the court the tools they need in order to effectively run, run their courts.
Not on just, I mean, I, you know, I...
And, and this, this, this takes effect January 2015, so...
We still have a couple of years.
No, you've got one more budget.
You've got one more year. You've got one more budget to do it.
You've got one more budget.
Twenty, thirteen, fourteen.
When, when these judges ran for those positions, they knew they were doing probate.
But I don't think that they knew that they were running with that type of liability on their head. I don't, I don't know if they did or not.
Well, I mean, I guess the issue is these judges could say, just appoint and then send us the bill and tell us, figure out how to pay it.
Right.
So, I mean, that's...
Hold us in contempt?
Not hold us in contempt, just send us the bill. And they have every right to appoint an investigator, an auditor and do all these things. They've, I guess, kind of held the line with us, but it gets to the point where it's too much.
Okay. So, do we move forward or do we just put it in neutral?
As long, I mean, as long as the court's aware of what the costs associated with doing it and having it placed.
Well, that's, that's what I'm letting everybody know that...
They were looking at a penny and a half?
We knew what the costs were going to be when we passed the item, you know, to create the court. So, we decided we weren't going to fund it this year anyway, this coming budget. So, we still have time.
Bottom line, it's a penny and a half is what we're looking at.
Don't you have to, you have to budget it for the 2014 budget because they're going to take, they're going to take office in January 2015. So, it is...
You know, we're budgeting all this stuff, you know? And at least the two guys on the left side here can't buy materials to fill potholes, you know? I mean, we took money away from our road and hay. This is the reality, okay? That's what we live with. The calls come every day into our offices. You know, we're, we're out of money. We can't do these, all these things. We can't construct any new projects. We can't do all these things because we've shifted money from road and bridge into the general fund. Now, we're going to, already, two years from now, we're taking a penny and a half that we won't have access to, to provide basic services to the folks that we represent.
This was brought up during the budgetary process, if you remember, and I mentioned it. Yeah, you're, you're, you're short, you're, you're shorting your, your road and bridge fund, but you didn't want to pay the, I'm not saying you, but the court did not want to pay or reimburse you that penny or whatever it was that we took some years back.
We were asking for it.
So, you're still running short. Yeah, but it, but it...
Okay, it's two pennies. We're looking at two pennies.
Yeah, but, but what it also meant was not being able to give the employees a raise or raising taxes.
Right.
And you can't have it...
Both ways.
You can't have it both ways.
Yeah, but we're already taking a penny and a half.
No, I'm just telling you what's going to happen. Like I'm saying that, well, we end up spending all this stuff and then when it comes time to pay, nobody wants to raise taxes. Or nobody wants to cut expenses because they're going to cut services.
And we want to give employees...
They want to give employees a raise that they need. So, Arnold, this was never a problem until you showed up. So, just kidding, Arnold. I'm sorry, Pete? Exactly right.
If we wait, it's going to be more expensive.
It's going to be more later.
No doubt.
The, the...
So, are road materials.
So, maybe what we need to do is encourage these larger cities to be annexing so we don't have to worry about their roads anymore.
Well, they annexed only where there's no roads. That's the problem.
Or, or they're already paved.
You know, they don't even annex where they're paved. You know, they annex where there's no roads. They annex where there's only a state highway.
But that's what they go. There's already roads.
And usually a commercial establishment next to it so that they can get the sales tax part and the ad valorem tax part.
I mean, as long as you all...
I know. You're just a messenger. I know that. But you're right. This is a reality of it. And we had an opportunity the last couple of budgets to do it, but it's, you know, no one wants to do that.
Well, that's how we get paid the big bucks to make these tough decisions.
Well, I just want to make sure that folks are understanding of the fact that, you know, it's hard to think that in the future, we might recapture some of the lost revenues into those funds when we're already committing general revenue funds into the future. I mean, it's like, it's kind of like, it's called like a negative surplus.
Well, I don't think you can ever, I think it's impossible to recapture lost revenue. Once it's lost, it's lost. You don't recapture it. Well, just so we know, going ahead that this is what's going to happen and, and we're going to have challenges again.
So, the resolutions, I mean, just...
Go home.
We can, do you want us to continue to pursue the bill?
Yeah, I thought, no, I think it's something that we need to do.
Okay.
But just to let everybody aware that this is what it's going to cost to do it.
Okay.
All right. So, I had a motion, a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries.
I, I think we should wait two years before we go into this.
Okay. Is that, is that what you want to revisit then? You want to go ahead and ax and not, and not pursue the probate court?
No, I mean, it's, it passed with a 4-1.
No, but, hold on. I didn't, I thought we were going to come out of here.
Hey, I don't think there was ever a motion, Judge. We were just...
You know what? I think you're right. I don't think anybody made a motion, right? So, we got two choices. One, we move forward with the probate court.
Move forward with the probate court or...
Or we don't.
Or we don't. All right.
I make a motion to move forward.
I have a, a motion by Commissioner Hernandez to move forward with the probate court. Do I have a second?
I amend that motion to move forward the court in two years.
I'll second that.
In two years?
In two years.
When?
From two years from now.
So, take effect 16, 26?
So, it's, it's affect the 2015 fiscal year?
2017. I mean, it's set for what now?
It's set to...
2015.
It's set to take January 2015.
Okay. I say two years from 2015.
I don't know if the legislature will do that.
Well, we just take this bill down and we'll just refile it.
Oh, you just take it out and then refile it?
We'll reform another bill next legislative session to create a probate court.
All right. Well...
As long as you're aware that, I mean, the costs associated go up and...
Well, it's more than a discussion here. We're actually changing the bill.
Well, but this is the thing though. If we're, if we're going to do it no matter what, it's like Pete said, construction costs are going to go up. So, it's just going to get more expensive to wait two years.
Yeah, there's no going around.
And all we would do now is just, the bill, 3861, we wouldn't pursue it anymore. We leave it, we leave it there.
See what happens?
And then, and then next legislative session, we'll file a bill creating a probate court for Cameron County.
Well, all we're doing is just deferring a problem.
Inevitable.
That's all we're doing. We're deferring a problem.
You're not deferring a problem. You're, you're not creating it as soon as this bill would create it.
Well, you're deferring the problem and views of what the county court of law judges are thinking now. Now, they're going back and they're exposed once again. Is that correct?
Or they start sending us bills.
Or they start sending us bills. Great idea. Why'd you tell them that?
Well, I mean, it's reality.
All right. So, the motion is what?
My motion was the...
Oh, your motion. Okay. Do you want to...
To create the court. Yes. And if we don't...
No, but he's, he's asking to amend your motion.
No, no. I want it effective 2015.
Okay. Move by Commissioner Hernandez to keep it the way it is, effective January 2015.
I, I'd like to amend that motion.
Okay.
Putting our penny back into our fund when we get to that.
I don't think we could do it.
I'm not going to do that.
Well, in that case...
Because you can't, yeah, because you can't budget future stuff like that.
Well, we can do it now.
You can't do it now either.
We'll get your penny back to you then.
It's not on the agenda.
I meant the next budget cycle. Okay. Well, I'll second.
Okay. Move by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Sanchez to move forward with the probate court, effective?
January 2015.
January 1st, 2015. Any discussion?
You wouldn't consider making that 2016?
Well, that's up to Ernie because they, they made the motion.
Is there an election cycle 2016?
Every year's an election cycle.
No, 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 no. I'm, I'm just, you know, it makes sense. If, if we do defer it...
I mean, this is like a crunch time, you know? I mean...
And I, I can see your, your point, but I also look at it in two years. That $1 million supposedly to extend the other, the Hall of Justice is probably going to cost us, what? One and a half million? So, at least. I don't know. I just...
I mean, we're going to have to come up with money a lot sooner than we're thinking we are with this action.
And I think your option would be either 2015 or 2017. You wouldn't be able to be in 2016 because the election cycle would have to be...
And 2017 would give us time to build out, do something, you know, with the buildings a little bit.
The payment, the payment, this budget would start in the 2014, 15 fiscal year.
Which is next year.
No. It would, well, it's not coming up this year, right?
It's the following.
Because we got the 13, 14 coming up. The next one is the 14, 15 coming up. That's when it would come up.
The building process would come up next year. You're going to be ready by then.
The building process...
Yeah, you'd have to build it just for the upcoming budget cycle.
Yeah, but if we build it and it sits for a year or two, someone else would take over the court.
It's not going to be built for...
It'll, it'll take a while to get that.
Yeah, it's going to take a while.
But the, but the last thing you want is to have a court in January 2015 and not have a building to put it in. Where no one, know where to put them.
Well, yeah, that's true.
We did that with the JP Court. We approved the JP Court not knowing where to put them.
Subject to where they were going though.
How much?
We can do that here, two subjects to where they're going.
Will it cost us if we wait, Pete? 20 to 25% more if we wait?
The, the expansion of the courthouse on the east side was going to be more, not just for a new probate court, but to put, to house the new JP and hopefully put some type of law library back over there. The, the expansion is needed. 7,000 square feet would be a very, a very needed addition to that courthouse. And you who work it every day know how crowded it is. It's either that or build a brand-new facility, which would cost 30, 40, 50 million dollars. To spend a million, $2 million to expand that one is a lot less than going into the bond debt for the next 30 years for a huge expansion, a huge new courthouse.
If we build a new facility, we should do it like in San Benito though.
We've talked about going out to Almito. We've talked about that too.
The problem is we need a lot of planning, a lot of discussion and a lot of creative financing. And we have none, but yet we want to put ourselves in a situation where we've got to do something that is ready by 2015.
David, at some point, we have to move forward. We can't just keep waiting and waiting and waiting.
I'm not saying to keep waiting. I'm saying we need to...
We have, we've had growth. We've had expansions. We, we've become aware of our exposure now because of the probate issue that we weren't aware of before. I think we've made the district judges aware of the fact that they can basically start, you know, sending us bills for stuff that needs to be done when it comes to probate issues. You know, we need to be proactive.
They know that, okay? I mean, we've done a lot of things.
My whole concern is to be proactive and, and look down the road. Not what's going to happen today, but two or three years from now. And we do have another budget cycle to go through to make these adjustments.
Why don't we do this?
Before we have to address it.
If you, if you agree. Arnold, can we change, can we, can we ask to change?
Do you want to defer a couple of weeks and we can discuss it then? I mean...
No, I don't think anything's going to change in a couple of weeks. I think people are digging their heels in. Why can't we make it effective January 1st? This is Commissioner Benavides is suggesting January 1st, 2016. Or you could even make it, or you could even make it in, to coincide with our, with our, or make it coincide with our budget year, make it October 1st, 2016.
Okay, then, but then where's the, there needs to be an election cycle too.
We could just appoint them.
There doesn't have to be an election cycle. We did it that way, but things have changed apparently. So, why wouldn't we make it effective October 1st, 2016? Now, that gives us two budget cycles. Would you be okay with that?
I would probably support that.
October 1st of 2016?
Then...
That's it.
It can be done next legislative session.
Yeah, then, then, then we don't need a bill. We can wait till the next legislative cycle to get that done.
Well, but don't we need to know to build our building and have it done?
Well, we, we agreed to do it.
Well, yeah, but what if we, I mean, we build it and then it doesn't make it through the session for whatever reason, then we spent a million and a half dollars on a building or building a court for nothing. then we spent a million and a half dollars on a building, or building a court for nothing.
Can you find out?
We'll know by May whether or not it's gonna pass, we're gonna know right away.
Yeah, cause we had, uh, originally, we had two, two different bills drafted, we had one where we elect someone and then one where a person gets appointed, and then the next election cycle, you know, they go through the election process, so we can...
That can be reasoned.
So that, yeah, that, that, that's not a problem.
Would there be a problem in doing it effective January first, twenty sixteen?
I don't know if we could be ready.
I don't, we won't be ready by then.
At least add another year into the process.
You wanna make it, I, I can support either January first, twenty sixteen, or October first, twenty sixteen, to coincide with our budget.
Yeah, it's, it's better off, we just wait till October one, if you're gonna wait till twenty sixteen.
I would think so. Now, can, will, will the bill be an issue if we do it, we pass it, subject to, see, I, I think, we don't, I think Commissioner Sanchez is, is, is on, on point, I mean, we, you know, we build out and then for whatever reason it gets vetoed, um, and you know how that can happen.
Don't let it happen.
But, but I think it's important that what we do is maybe make it effective January, I mean, I'm sorry, October first, twenty sixteen. But write that in the bill today, it gets passed, but it becomes effective on that day, if in fact we can do it.
Okay.
That we don't have to worry about, and then if it doesn't pass for whatever reason, then we refight it again.
So we would appoint someone to take office October one, January six, uh, twenty, I mean, I mean, October one, twenty sixteen?
But there's an election coming up that November of twenty sixteen.
It would be like a month.
Be like a month.
Or three, if there's opposition.
Or, you could also, by, by that time, October first of twenty sixteen, assuming that there's no contested general election, you could appoint the winner of the, of the primary election as well.
Correct.
We can do that. So can we do that?
I don't have a problem with...
Okay?
October first, twenty sixteen?
Whatever you all wanna do.
October first, twenty sixteen, I think we can do that, let's do that, I think that'll work, okay?
I can, I can amend my motion to that date, my only concern, Arnold, at what time, at what point will we know whether or not this bill passes? Would it be by the end of May? So we'll know long before we start building, it's not like we're not gonna know.
That's right, that's right, okay?
I'll amend my motion to October.
Commissioner Hernandez has amended his motion to make it effective October first, twenty sixteen. Commissioner Sanchez, you wanna second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, that was moved by Commissioner Sanchez, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries.
One good juror, no kidding.
Not yet, gang, hold on. Stay on the horse. Item U, discussion impossible action to move magistrate, now this'll be interesting, to move magistrate court out of the Cari Salis Detention Center. Pete, I know you've got some answers to where you're gonna put him.
I don't.
No, you don't. Why don't you explain briefly what's going on?
Yeah, y'all are aware of, of the decision that, that sheriff took, and so, I, you know, I've talked to staff, Arnold, Marta, and I, I really don't have a recommendation as to where we could move him to.
I mean, did we have a problem there that precipitated this action to occur?
Aye.
Was there a threat, was there like, uh, I mean, I think that, who's here, Mr. Cordova?
Judge Cordova's here.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm not aware of any issues, I know the Sheriff's Department, the two Drainas brothers are here, Mr. Liner is here. I have no, uh, we had gotten, um, a email from them, from Sheriff Lucio, supporting a proposed bill to expand our authority, and two days later, we received this that they're asking us and pre-trial services, as I understand it, to be removed.
Have you expressed a concern for your staff or your safety or anything, I mean?
I haven't had a discussion with the sheriff since January, and at that time, uh, he expressed his, and, and I believe both Draina brothers were there as well, and they expressed their devotion to the magistrate and that it was a very successful system, and I have not heard a word from the sheriff since that point in time. I have not said anything to the sheriff or to any of his staff regarding any security issues or concerns. Uh, I have no idea where this is coming from.
Were you shocked by this?
I was shocked by this, yes. Surprised, yes.
We've been through an adventure process.
But, you know, where you put the rooster heel crow, so if you move us somewhere, we'll do it. Uh, wherever we need to be placed and housed, um, there's some nice underpasses between here and the sheriffs. We'll go there if we have to.
You may have to move some people out of there already, though, but, uh, I'm sure no one will notice the difference, quite frankly.
No, they won't. It, it will blend in well, uh, I don't know, whatever you all wanna do.
Well, this is, I mean, this is, this is important, I think some, some folks from the sheriff's office are here, uh, if anybody needs to ask them any questions, but where, where are we gonna put them, the magistrates?
There was a discussion a while back, and I'm gonna spend some more of your money, Commissioner, regards, uh, about expanding, uh, the jail to build a judicial facility, uh, to the jail, where you could do your magistrations, have a, a county court of law building, and have people actually, the lawyers would actually have a place to go and get their people out of jail, um, it's looking more and more that, that may be a needed, uh, a necessity as we move forward, to expand the, uh, the existing jail with a, with a courtroom.
Uh, I would just like to point out to the court that there, there, uh, this is a, a matter of great concern. Uh, there is no budget set up for any type of this type of an operation. This, uh, moving out of the magistrates from the jail system would create transportation cost because these inmates would then have to be transferred daily, seven days a week, for their magistrations.
And who would have to transport them?
And that's another issue, uh, that's gonna involve personnel.
Where are the magistrates in all of the other counties, you know, that have this type of system? They're in the facility.
They, they have a video, like Kidaglo County, they have a video room, and they're connected to all their, the, the courts, so the judge will sit in their court and they'll do it video to the jail.
And, and that poses its own set of issues, because we still have, well, there's a cost, but, I mean, that's probably minimal compared to building a facility, but the issue then comes, I have to review a significant amount of paperwork in order to magistrate individuals, I mean, I've got reports to read, I've got all kinds of things, and there's a legal issue with regards to the warnings can be done by video, but I don't believe you can do the actual magistration, uh, it has to be an in-person, and I, I was having some discussions with Mr. Garza about this, uh, yesterday, in fact, so there's some legal issues that I don't think you can do the whole magistration process through video. Uh, I can't swear to you that, but I'm pretty sure that's correct.
But I know that we were doing that with Edelstein and...
To some degree.
To some degree, we were doing that already.
Out of the county court of law, no? Uh, doesn't Judge McDonald do that?
He doesn't do the mag, he doesn't do the magistrations that way, he has a different facility, or different role in the process. Uh, and he does do that, and he's very effective in what he does, but the actual warnings and such cannot be done, as I understand it, and there's some people with much better and brighter minds than I that can talk about this, but, uh, I don't think that that can be done by video, I think that part has to be done in person, as I understand it.
How long have the magistrates been there?
Eight years, as I understand.
And why is it an issue today? I mean, why, all of a sudden, does this surface, Mike, or, I don't, somebody answer, I mean, we've been there for almost a decade and now, all of a sudden, it becomes an issue and...
Okay, there's, there's a number of issues, I know it's on the executive session for discussion, and, um, I'd prefer to discuss the security issues in executive session.
Is that, well, is that what the principal thing, okay, well, so it wasn't a security issue?
Listen, uh, it, it's in a area designed for inmate release within the security perimeter, and at first, it started off being done right in the booking area, the magistrates would come in and do it just like the JP's did. Then they got a little more responsibility and they started doing habeas corpuses there, and then we have sixty attorneys going through an inmate area.
And how long has that been going on?
That's been going on since they started the habeas corpuses.
And when was that?
Uh, it got increasingly larger and larger over the years, the last three or four years.
Okay, so it's been, now, my question is, why is it today, is it an issue, and it wasn't an issue three or four years ago?
We moved the US Marshals from Detention Center, number one, down to the Cari Salis Rock Detention Center because of staffing and racial issues. We could probably get a waiver from the jail standards to let them do what they're doing magistrate, but if they did it at night or on Saturday or Sunday, cause their court is, is supposed to be seventy-a-week court. Now, if we shut down all of our, our security operations to, to move the marshals in order for them to have magistrate's court or habeas corpus court, then, you know, something has to give, and we're at that point right now where we, if they come in at night or on the weekends, we can discuss that, and I was hoping we could discuss it in executive session, we, there are some options there, we just plan...
Well, if there's legal issues that need to be discussed in executive session, I would say we go into executive session.
I'll second.
Okay, all right, well, let's hold off on this one until we come back. Our item B is done. W, discussion impossible action to schedule a joint meeting with the Cameron County RMA to discuss plans to relocate Park One Hundred?
Judge, um, I ask this be put on the agenda, um, as Mr. Houston had mentioned earlier, the, um, zoning commission met last week, and, uh, there was a member of the RMA, and Commissioner Hernandez and myself, and, um, I think it's come down to discussing the relocation of Park Road One Hundred to the west. And so, uh, in an effort to do this, I don't know, we actually wanna work, no workshop, or do we wanna meeting, um, of all three entities together, just to actually just talk over what options we might have, or if we actually wanna do anything with it, and, uh, I was asked to come back to this commission and see if we could, uh, agree to have a joint meeting with the RMA and the zoning commission.
I have an issue with this item. I think that until we get our environmental document cleared, we should not address the movement of Park Road One Hundred. The only thing that will occur by us addressing this now is that it's gonna create another exception that will delay the process longer. That's my opinion. I've seen what has occurred in the process, I know how far along we've gotten, and I've expressed this concern before, that addressing Park Road One Hundred issue, after we had a hearing and after we've had some revisions to the environmental document, by addressing this now, and Pete, you can enlighten me and enlighten the rest of the commission, but I, I believe that there would be an exception that would occur that would delay that process even longer. You know, as it is, it's taken longer than most of us wanted it to take, longer than we anticipated that it would take, and this is gonna throw another wrench at, in, another, uh...
Delay.
Wrench in the woodpile, or whatever it is.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Commissioner, and I think that's been the concern of everybody, um, and I think, and I remember we had a joint meeting, um, or, or there were members of the zoning commission that came before the RMA a couple of months ago. But I think one, one option that we might have, and, and we, we did it, um, after the, uh, after the public hearing last July, is just be upfront with Federal Highway Administration, and one thing we can do is ask them and, um, and the Planning Division of Techstart in Austin, see if they would have any problem with us doing some type of planning, you know, regarding this potential project. And if they come back and say, no, you can do it, then, then we can, I guess, you know, have that joint meeting at that time. If they come back and say, no, you know, because then you're creating one huge project, you know, then, then, then we can lay off, but that's probably...
I don't have a problem with that occurring, I have a problem in starting, having meetings and discussions before that would occur.
Yeah.
Cause I definitely don't think that we want to be a problem for the environmental analysis document to be delayed again.
And I agree, Commissioner, uh, in fact, when, when Mr. Houston had approached me earlier, um, I had gone to Pete, and Pete had, had, uh, expressed his concern over, um, it affecting the EIS. Uh, so, uh, and I relayed that to the zoning commission, and, um, they agreed to meet again last week, and I told them that I would come before you all, it's up to you all, whatever you all want to, whatever the court agrees to do or not.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be up in Austin next weekend, I can probably touch base with both Techstart and FHWA, and then we can move forward accordingly.
Okay, do I hear motion to table?
Or, or a...
More so with FHWA, because Techstart wants to give us, anybody, the road right now, I mean...
Ta, table or amended to, subject to approval by those parties?
Uh, the, the discussion was lengthy, Judge, and there are definitely pros and cons, but the, basically, the consensus, if not the overwhelming majority of everybody present, was that it needed to be discussed. Postponing this thing won't ever make it any easier, it makes no sense to tie in a half a billion-dollar causeway into an old existing park road that's already too close to the beach. If you just postpone it, one of these days, the money's gonna be there, and you're gonna say, oh, by the way, you know, I think we gotta move it back, it makes more sense, then you're talking about even a further delay. The, as I believe, and Pete will mention, that the RMA met the other day and did recommend a joint meeting between the zoning and yourselves and the RMA to discuss this item, and I really believe it needs to be discussed because postponing it will not get you anywhere but a bad result.
Well, I'm not gonna accommodate, or be in support of accommodating, you know, anyone if it's gonna delay the process that is needed to be able to even have a viable development on the northern end of the island with the second access.
No one wants to go...
You know, look, everybody comes to us and everybody wants everything, but to this day, besides the county and the RMA, I haven't seen one dollar, either from the develop, from the property owners in the north or the town that wants this change to occur. I mean, that's what I see, and if I stand here and allow something to occur that will delay the impetus for the six and a half miles north of the town of South Padre, because we are trying to accommodate a meeting with property owners and planning, I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot.
Commissioner, there's no one here in this court that is standing before you that wants development to occur any better, any faster, in a smarter fashion than myself. We do not see, wh- what we do see is a bridge to nowhere if this second causeway comes into the old Park Road One Hundred. It needs to be a mid-island thoroughfare, we got landowners who are willing to donate the, the easements to make it happen.
Mr. Houston, it's a whole lot easier when you have an EIS document that's approved to make a change in a piece of it than it is to have the whole thing redone and re-approved, the way you're looking at it.
We're not asking you to reach, change anything.
The discussions, the discussions that we're having today, you know, are to make some changes, that's the discussions.
The discussion this morning was to have a meeting.
My experience, my experience in what I've seen occur, and we've got documents waiting for, I've been here thirteen years, we've got some documents that I'm waiting to get approved from thirteen years ago, that were there ten years before I was there because of slight changes that were introduced into the system. I don't want that to be an excuse for the folks that are reviewing the document today to not issue that statement, uh, Fonzie, because we've introduced another wrench into the woodpile.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, the Commissioner's right, we've, we've spent a lot of time, effort, and money in getting to this point, and, you know, we, we might be as close as six months away from getting environmental clearance, and I don't think anybody wants to jeopardize that, and, and regardless, whether right of way is donated or acquired, there is an environmental due diligence, there is an environmental document that's gonna have to be prepared, and so the last thing we wanna do is tie that into the existing EIS and FHWA come back and, and, and slap it. So I think the best thing to do is be upfront with them and, and just ask the question, and then see what they come back with.
You know, and it works, okay, the system works, because we did one of these categorical exclusions on seventy-seven in the Sebastián area. It, it was like, before the document was done, we had a categorical exclusion that allowed work to occur in one piece, no problem.
We did one there, and we did one in Sarita, and both are under construction now.
Right, you know, and, and they're all under construction. And they were real easy to do if we followed the channels that they have in place, not the channels that we'd like to see.
I think that the, um, first of all, Herb, appreciate all, all that you do, and I think the Commissioner has some valid points, but, well, look, we, we have an opportunity here that, that Pete works for both the RMA and the county, so we have a, a natural liaison there that, that can be looked at and addressed, and he can do, you know, do his due diligence and do that without having to have formal meetings amongst the RMA, because at the end of the day, we're gonna say, well, Pete, you know, go ahead and, and look at this, like we're doing, like he's already done now. So I don't see the, the point in having a, a joint meeting at this point. We can have a lot of internal meetings, you know, Pete can, you know, can be the, like I said, the liaison between the court and the RMA, as he has been, and just take it from there. I think, I don't wanna get into a big argument over this, I think it's, we just continue the path that we're going. Pete, you just do what, you know, what you know and think need to do, and working with, with the RMA members and members of the court and, and, uh, and the folks out there on the north end. I just don't want this to be a big, really arguing over really nothing, quite frankly.
One other item, Judge, there is a, an item that would come before you all, probably in a few weeks. Cameron Acquisitions is a company composed of, and a managing partner, the Toll Brothers, and they're an executive residential home builder, they've got eight thousand feet of beachfront, uh, just south of Beach Access Six and going south to the town. They would like to know where, they know the bridge, where the bridge is gonna come in. They wanna know is, are we gonna plan on development in back of the existing Park Road One Hundred, or are we serious about relocating it to a mid-island thoroughfare, which to every developer that we've talked to makes sense, and that's where it should be. So all you do is by putting this thing off, is you lack the certainty that planners need, and in this instance, eight thousand feet of beachfront, an owner needs to know what is gonna be and where the bridge is gonna intersect.
Well, I think the termini of the bridge is already there, as exists today, and I think that if a developer is looking at that size of a project, maybe they oughta consider the unimpacted area of Parkway One Hundred, fund that relocation to occur, you know, or commit dollars to the future for that relocation to occur, and come to the table with some kind of an agreement with us.
The two biggest landowners that were talked, that we have talked to and have indicated an interest is the Pennell family and the Cameron Acquisitions. They're both in agreement to donate the rightsway necessary to make this happen. As far as funding, the RMA already has in their budget a total rebuild of Park Road One Hundred, all the way up to almost Beach Access Six, to the, the design specs of what you see currently within the city of South Padre Island, so those monies are gonna...
They're not funded, though.
Huh?
That's not funded.
Well, it's gonna be funded because it's part of the project description, and that's gonna be there, plus we realize that funding is necessary, and that's why we're looking at a county improvement district to take care of all these issues that are north-island issues, but it all has to start with discussions.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't, I don't think anybody disputes that, I think it's just the, I think it's just the timing of what we're doing, but if, if they're looking for an answer in a month, that's, they're not gonna have it.
No, we're not looking for an answer in a month, Judge, but at least a certainty that it is being considered seriously, because to these developers, it matters a whole lot if we're using existing Park Road One Hundred or moving it to twelve hundred feet, more or less, to the west.
Mr. Houston, don't you think that some of these... Mr. Houston, don't you think that some of these analyses that have been done to be able to sell this project on a CDA-type agreement have not been looked at? And it is in the best interest of Cameron County that that development occur in the most practical judicial way that would not only protect the environment, but protect the developers?
I don't believe a mid-island thoroughfare was ever considered in these studies. And we're not asking for the studies to be uninterrupted or stopped or anything.
The market analy, the market studies that were done took into consideration most of these things.
I never saw, I, I read the whole report, Commissioner, and there's never any consideration in the EIS report to, as to the relocation of Park Road 100.
No, but the best development practices.
Well, the best development practices are right now, the current Park Road 100. You're lucky if you've got 400 feet of available property.
In some areas, in others less.
In, in most of the areas.
And again, just for the record, the EIS did not, did not include Park Road 100 or the relocation of it. Just make that clear for the record.
I mean...
Yeah, I think we're going beyond the discussion that we should.
Yeah, let me hear, again, let me, let me hear a motion to table and just, Pete, continue working with, with everybody on this, okay? Motion to table by Commissioner Gatsa, I have a second. Second.
I'll say it.
Committee by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor, say by saying aye. Any opposed, carries. Item Y, discussion and possible action regarding a resolution related to Senate Bill 971. What's that one?
Judge, we put this on just to, to let the court know we're tracking this bill. It's changes that are being proposed on the eligible uses for TRZ revenues and in this case would include the ports. So we'll just keep tracking the bill.
Okay, do I hear motion to college by Commissioner Hernandez, I have a second. By Commissioner Gatsa. All in favor, say by saying aye. Any opposed, carries. Item Y, discussion and possible action regarding the Public Works Department work schedule?
Judge, this item was placed on the agenda and Arnold is probably in a better position to discuss the issues. He's, he's been working on this, but I believe it, it's got to do with the, the breaks that employees get in the public work departments, in the public work department and the timing of the breaks, the whole work schedule. We didn't, we didn't hand the, the court a copy of what the personnel policies say. But basically, the personnel policies say the department head may set at their discretion the, the, the timing for the lunch and the breaks. And we're talking about two 15-minute breaks throughout the workday. I believe that the auditor has, has some, some issues that, you know, she might want to come up and, and address the court.
Hasn't it been resolved?
No.
No.
Hasn't been resolved yet?
Well, not, not, I think we, based on, on the policies, developed the schedule, but I think the auditor still has some concerns with that, that, that need to be addressed with the court.
Okay, so who wants to go first? Do you want to deal with the concerns or you want to tell us really what is happening right now? Why don't you tell us what is happening right now in terms of, and then we'll hear the concerns.
Right now, our public works field employees are scheduled to work Monday through Thursday from 8:00 AM to 4:30 with a 30-minute lunch. And on Fridays, they are scheduled to work from 7:00 AM to 3:30 with a 30-minute lunch.
Okay. So tell me where, where the break situation is.
The break situation, I've allowed them to take, I've set the schedule for them to take a break from 11:45 to 12 for their morning break. They can take it during that time period. And then they can take their afternoon break from 12:30 to 12:45.
So in essence, they're getting, they're, 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 they're going in at the, the front part of their lunch hour with a 15-minute break and then at the back end, another 15-minute break. So in essence, they're getting an hour for lunch.
If you see it that way, yeah.
Uh, that's what it is. That's what it is. Okay, and so, and then they're leaving at 4:30?
Yes.
Okay. So are breaks mandatory of some sort?
No, they're not mandatory. And like I've discussed with them, with the, with the foreman...
How long has this been going on again? Has it been going on forever?
The conversation I've had with them, it's...
13 years, I don't know.
It's always been, it's always been this way.
So why is it an issue today?
Um, I don't know. I, I spoke with Martha about, it was like a week ago about it, where it was brought to our attention that they, that we were, that the public works employees were not working a full workday or a full work schedule. And that's where the issue came about.
Well, it, I mean, look, it does give the appearance that they're taking an hour for lunch, even though essentially...
They're taking their morning and afternoon break in conjunction with their lunch.
Exactly.
If they take it.
And let me just shed some light, because I had, I had a meeting with, with the guys, because they had a concern in my precinct. And what happens is when you have road crews out there and you have these 15-minute breaks, if, if you're in the middle of road construction and people are going to take a break, it disrupts the work and you have to take equipment or vehicles off the road. You've got to find a place to take that break or whatever. So it basically disrupts the operation. And so what the department had done in order to avoid that is everybody agreed, all the employees and the supervisor, instead of taking our 15-minute break in the morning and in the afternoon, we'll combine it with our lunch so that everybody takes a break at the same time. And you don't have staggered breaks, because I know like in different offices, you might have someone take a 15-minute break at 10, someone do it at 11, so there's always someone covering the window or whatever. On this particular case, if you have a five-man crew that's required to get a job done and two of them take a break and the other three are still on duty, and when they come back from their 15-minute break, the other three take their 15-minute break, what do you have? You have 30 minutes of no work getting done. So to be most efficient, what they did is they combined their morning and afternoon break with their lunch to get it done.
Right. And, and I've, I've spoken with Ruben and he's also spoken with the foreman and like our policy states, the 15-minute breaks in the morning and the afternoon are not, we're not, we're not required to give them those breaks. But if they are to take a break, they will take it at that time. If their schedule doesn't permit them to take that break, it only allows them to take their 30-minute lunch. That's a decision that the foreman out in the field needs to make and move forward that way.
Is there a wage and hour issue with this? Is that the problem with it or what?
No.
The, the issue that we have from, from our auditing perspective is that the timesheet is reflecting that public works is taking half an hour lunch. And the policy says that your breaks cannot be accumulated. And the intent of a break is, the intent of, or the concept of a break is that you get a 15-minute break mid-morning and mid-afternoon. And I understand what you're saying about the field crew being out and the lost, the downtime that they have to come in and I, I understand all that and, and, you know, we're, we're perfectly clear about, clear about that. But the issue is that you in essence have public works employees that, that from, from our perception and what we had been told was that they were taking a half-hour lunch. And two weeks ago, or I think a week ago, we find out that public works and admin staff, office clerical staff, are taking an hour for lunch and they're only getting docked 30 minutes. So consequently, we have an error that exists in the time, the timesheets as they're being turned in because they're not accurate, okay?
So then, so then our, you're telling me that our personnel policy is, is not congruent with wage and hour policy?
What, what I, what I'm saying here is that our, our personnel policy as approved says that should the employee's duties or workload not permit him or her to take a rest break, this time cannot be accumulated.
Well, they're not accumulating it.
They're taking it at 11:45.
It's being, it's being used in conjunction with their lunch hour.
But to me, accumulated means like accumulated...
Save it up all week, use it Friday afternoon.
Vacation pay and then leave early on Friday, you know, type of thing, not taking it in together with a lunch break.
Right. And then if this is a break, then the break being used in conjunction with their lunch loses...
That, that says accumulated. It doesn't say not to be used in conjunction with lunch.
And the break time loses...
You know, I mean, the latitude has to be given to the guys, the supervisor. And I think that's what our policy does. It gives that supervisor the latitude to make the decision at the work site. Because sometimes they don't take...
As long as the morning break is taken between the time they come in at noon in the morning and the afternoon's break is...
What difference does it make when they take it?
And if that's the court's intent, then that's fine, okay? However, that is not what our policy says and if the court chooses to...
Well, what does the policy say that, what, in your words?
In, in my words, it says that it cannot be accumulated. A break, and I follow that.
The definition of accumulation to me is saying, I'm not going to take breaks this week, so I'm accumulating 30 minutes every day for five days, which is 30 minutes times five is 150 minutes, two and a half hours. So on Friday, I'm going to leave at 2:30 instead of 5:00.
Correct.
We don't do that, okay? So you're not accumulating it. You're utilizing it on a daily basis.
I, I understand that. And I also call to mind that the court acknowledged what a break is actually intended to be, okay? It's supposed to be a mid-morning break and a mid, you know...
A break is supposed to be what the supervisor at the field wants it to be. Because sometimes they might not even get that 15-minute break if there's work that they're doing.
That's true, that's true. And while the policy does allow adjustments to regular hours of operation as subject to the department head or the, or the supervisor, the intent of that originally, you know, from people's understanding of that is that for offices that were allowed to, that, that needed to be open during the noon hour, that allowed them to work their flexible schedule and that their hours were not strictly eight to five and were closed at noon. That gave them that flexibility. So, you know, the, the exception that, that I would ask the court to consider then is that the, the public works lunch hour is actually from that time and that they are allowed to use their break half an hour, I mean, 15 minutes before and 15 minutes after, after lunch.
Which is what it's always been.
Which is what they are doing that we did not know they were doing. And that this exception is going to apply to field workers unless the court chooses to apply this to, to their clerical help as well.
The memo is announced. It only applies to field employees. Our clerical employees, I think there's three, they still take, they take a 30-minute lunch, but their breaks are set at different, I mean, if they take...
They don't all have to take them at the same time. They could take them at 10 to 10:15.
Right, because of the uniqueness of the, of the field employees, they take it. If, if they're going to take it, they're going to take it at that, at that time.
Right.
And we met, I met with, with, with legal department for about an hour last week, last Friday, when we discussed this and, and, you know, the decision that we made is, is, is...
We're in compliance. What's your recommendation, Arnold?
Just leave it the way it is. For us to continue to be operating this way.
Put in words what your recommendation is, exactly.
Okay. For our public works employees, our field employees to continue working Monday through Thursday from 8:00 AM to 4:30 with a 30-minute lunch off the clock and the two breaks, one in the morning from 11:45 to 12, one in the afternoon from 12:30 to 12:45. And then on Friday to come in at 7:00 AM, leave at 3:30 with a, with a, with a 30-minute lunch and also the breaks, 15 minutes in the morning, or 11:45 to 12:00 and 12:30.
And those would be at the discretion of...
At the discretion of the foreman, yes.
There, there was also another group...
Yeah, our, our, our vehicle maintenance staff, I, I talked about it with Pete, they do fall under public works, so...
So they're included as well? Okay.
Arnold, the, um...
So move.
Second.
Right, right now, the, the staff, our regular staff, when they take a 15-minute break, they don't come off the clock, correct?
No, they don't. No, they don't.
So if the public works are showing 30 minutes for lunch, their morning break and afternoon break are not coming off the clock.
They're not coming off the clock.
So what's the, what's the difference?
That would be actually a violation of wage, I believe.
Since they're only reporting half an hour for lunch, that 15 minutes and 15 minutes afterwards are not coming off the clock.
Right.
So what's the difference?
Not a...
Nothing.
I don't see where, you know, it's, it's not documented properly. It's, it's almost like you're creating two classes of employees. They, if they're not doing it, so it's illegal for them not to do it, yet our regular employees don't take, uh, come off the clock when they go have coffee in the morning or afternoon.
Yeah, they don't. So if, if you take a break and, whenever time you take your 15-minute break, it's on the clock. It's...
You're still working.
It's a courtesy that the county extends to employees. It's what it is.
So Arnold, does this, if, if this motion goes through, this will only apply to the, to the public works field employees? Not the clerical staff, not...
Not the clerical staff.
Is there any need to, to make an exception? I mean, to me, the way I see it, it falls within the policy.
Right.
Because we're not accumulating. And I would hate to say we're making an exception and then, you know, have other employees...
That was, that was part of the debate, or not debate, but, but discussion we had last Friday was regarding combining and accumulating. And accumulating is something gathered over time. Combining is, I mean, well, you put two things together, but...
Right, because if we, I mean...
That was a distinction that we made.
So then this is only going to apply to public works employees, so they're being, yeah, field employees. So they're going to be segregated out from the rest of the population. So, or, or does it leave it at the discretion of any department head that wants to accumulate that?
Our policy leaves it to discretion, the department head to set the times for employees to take their breaks.
Right. So then the auditor's office or the tax office or anybody can say, you know what, we're going to take these breaks right before lunch and after lunch, so we're closing shop at 4:30. That's up to the discretion. They can do that. Or else you're treating a certain set of employees differently than others. Well, but that's not really clear in our policy. Maybe we need to, to clarify the policy in terms of...
Yeah, I mean, you can do that at the bridge, you can do that at parks.
Exactly. Well, you, you could. You just don't. It wouldn't make sense to do it. But I think by leaving it to the discretion of the department head gives it just a lot more opportunity to be, for employees in different departments to be treated differently than others. I can imagine Joe sitting there, you know, and say, you know what, my employees would love to go home at 4:30 every single day. So you know what, you're not going to take a break. You're going to take it at, you know, you're going to take it at, at, at 11:30 or 11:45 on the, on the back end. And everybody leaves at 4:00. I'm going to close shop at 4:30. I know he wouldn't do that, but I'm saying you, technically, the way this is working...
4:45 would be the earliest he could. You can accumulate your morning break to the afternoon.
Well, no, but that, but that's what they're doing. Actually, you couldn't. You wouldn't leave early because then you would leave, if you leave early, then it would be short. You wouldn't be working a 40-hour work week.
Exactly. But that, that's why I think the appearance is here.
Clock out would be 5, but you leave at 4:45 because you're taking your 15-minute break.
At the end.
At the end.
But you got to be there for the...
But you have to be there for the 15 minutes.
Right. To clock out. So you, you have your break at work and then you leave.
Yeah, but then you leave. And if you decided to do that, then that's their discretion. With the way the policy is written, the department head or supervisor has the authority to set the times for breaks and lunch breaks.
And each department has to run their own depart, I mean, if we get in the middle and start telling them how to run their department, I mean, I don't want to be telling Tony, hey, you have to take your break at this time because like in his offices, they close at 4:30, but they're still there working, you know? And, and maybe he gives them their break at the end.
And the uniqueness of the situation in the field is that a 15-minute break in the middle of the morning could, could end up costing us 30 to 45 minutes of work time throughout the day.
Right. I mean...
When you add up, it's an hour and a half.
To me, you let each department...
Haven't had a break, you know. Can we go on break?
Can we take our 15-minute break?
Can we take our break?
Let's take our break now.
All right, there's a motion in a second to, what, to keep it, to leave it the way it is?
Do what Arnold said we needed to do.
I have one point I'd like to bring out to the court. I would, I would ask for legal to review the, any legal impact that the county may have when you have employees that are taking an hour for lunch and they leave the premises, or taking half an hour, okay, taking half an hour for lunch, leave the premises and get injured on their transport time from the site work to the place, to the eatery, to the local area, wherever they're going. And that, that accident actually occurs during their break.
Well, what's the difference between that and...
The crew eating on the side of the road.
Or eating on the side of the road or...
Well, the, the only, I, I mean, the only difference that I would see is that if they're, you know, they're eating on the side of the road and they're eating within their 30 minutes, that's, that's their time, okay, so...
So it depends on when the accident occurs.
That's, that's what I was suggesting.
But that would be where everybody thinks, is to allow their employees to go out running errand during a break. So that, that would need to be looked into also.
Well, but they're still on company time. I mean...
Right, but I mean...
They're not covered during their lunch hour, so like if they take their lunch from noon to 1:00, because when they leave, they have to punch out for lunch, right? So, public works, they can't punch out, they're out in the field. But any other office employee, when they go to lunch, they have to punch out. When they come back, they have to punch in. So that 15-minute break is almost impossible to take because they have to be back to punch out to go to lunch, right?
Right.
I mean, we're getting real technical, you know?
That's what I'm saying. We leave it up to the department.
Just an FYI.
Well, normally when there's litigation, it's over technical stuff anyway, so...
Juan, what do you think? Is it all right the way it is?
Yes.
Okay.
So they're, you're subject to legal.
Well, you know where those opinions have gotten you, Juan.
Hey, he's my lawyer.
Anything else? Anything else? We had a motion, a second. All in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries.
Wow. 30 minutes to do the same thing.
Discussion and possible action regarding sequester effects at the Cameron County International Bridge System.
Judge and Commissioner, I'd please this item on the agenda just to keep the court abreast. The last couple of weeks, we've seen waiting times at our bridges, you know, as low as 15 minutes and as high as over two hours.
Which is more, right?
Well, I mean, it, it, we hadn't hit two hours in a long time.
Semana Santa had any impact on that or not?
But, but what, you know, what we've seen is lane closures by CBP and so that is what, what caused the concern. Not sure once the...